Jump into the Q and A after that. Sorry to interrupt you.
I know we're happy to do so. Thank you very much. My name is Jackie Kaufman for the record with Carmody Torrance, Zennec in Hennessy, Incorporated. By reference, the previous special meeting, materials and information that we just submitted. We were just talking about operations. We're talking about vehicular access throughout the site. And we can go back, please, to the last plan that we were reviewing. Just to briefly recap, we're looking at an aerial plan here. We have the one way from Burdis vehicular towards that green arrow with a one-way arrow onto Cherry Street. And in a moment after I finish speaking about operations, I will invite up our traffic consultant to enhance this this part of our presentation. But we've identified for you the trash, the trash areas here. We have narratives that that go into more detail about how the building management will operate the trash removals. And in that same day, we were asked about snow removals. And if we can advance to the next slide. I do see one area here where the trash is that we also have a snowbank. But there will be snow removal equipment that is going to be onsite for immediate use by building management team. And the the front walkways and the driveway are remain clear. There's not that much of an area. So therefore, a large snow onsite storage is not considered to be necessary. We've identified two areas, of course, making the exception for where we'd bring the garbage out to. That would always be clear. So there's two, two banks that are suitable for snow storage. But in the event that we do have major weather events, then the snow would be removed and tracked offsite. So that's also included in our narrative. We were speaking before that about move-ins, deliveries and mail deliveries. And while it, we've requested a special permit to not to eliminate the need for a loading space onsite. And what we've done is you may have plans in your record that demonstrate a plan that shows where the park, a truck would park on the street on Burdis in front of another property, and that's a communal loading space. It's been advised that we provide some other on-street loading opportunity, and that's been provided onsite. We previously went through that as well. But the idea here, too, we're talking about just circulation patterns and how the site will work, I think would be helpful. And if we could go back to the site plan, to the color site plan, the landscape plan, which we were looking at earlier. And when in listening to the architect's presentation, you mentioned the wider sidewalks and the setbacks at the buildings, and it has been carefully designed in response to to the comments we received and also in response. And if you look very closely, you can see the nuances from that, from that roof line. Stepping back the roof, creating some lower roof lines and creating a consistency with the for the eye at level when you're coming down Burdis Street towards Cherry Street. And you were able to see that in the elevation that we we recently had up. But also, these buildings respect the building line that's there as well with minimal projection, but some that we will talk about with our special permits as well that go into beyond the building line, but within the setback, which is an interesting concept throughout New Cana when we look through some of the old mapping. But we thought that that was an important, an important aspect as well. The sidewalk and landscaping, I'm going to invite Tom up to to review that because I think that's a very important aspect to the site, both in softening it and also directing pedestrians around the site and enhancing that experience. The the parking is all hidden from view. So we have this nice opportunity. And we've also reduced the curb cuts significantly along Burdis and cleaning up Cherry Street, too, where there is some inconsistencies among sidewalks. And also continuing the different types of materials that have been identified in the village district as desirable will also be be included here. The parking for the building, we have a total of 51 spaces. Under building one, there are 15 spaces, including two handicap spaces. Building two, 29 spaces. The townhomes have a total of seven. Those are all underneath that very interesting decking that is shown. So all that their parking spaces are also concealed from view. The on-street parking spaces that currently exist will be relocated to different locations. And after we have the opportunity to sit with the DPW and Police Commission will be able to tell you with more authority that that plan will work, but geometrically, we believe that it works. It is consistent with establishment of other on-street parking spaces. And the landscaping, too, is really makes makes the most of the location of buildings, the curb cuts and the materials. And it also provides a significant increase in green space at multiple levels, which will be really interesting. Because I think for the most part, what we see in an urban environment is just a building that comes right up to the sidewalk. The pedestrians walk around it. Maybe you have the opportunity to have some green landscaping at at the base. But not only have has the applicant maximized the the at-street-level landscaping, but they've tiered it throughout the site. So you have the ability as a pedestrian, when you start to look through some of the renderings, it may, you may miss this at first, but it's worth a second look. To come around Cherry Street or as you're coming down Burdis, you do, or even walking through, walking through the driveway or going down the driveway, you have the ability to integrate with landscaping at multiple different levels for the eye. And that's, I think that's a very exciting feature. It's also a very exciting feature for somewhat for a resident of the building, because they aren't just looking out on to the back of a building or to concrete at any given level because of the decking that exists around the townhomes. It provides a very nice indifferent experience, I think, than some of the other multifamily buildings that we've seen in town. So it's a unique feature that I like to to speak more to now. So I'll invite Tom up. And then if we can advance the slide.
Hi, I'm Tom Cross from Wesley Stout Associates, 96 Main Street, New Cana in Connecticut, right across the street. And if you could flip to, yes, this plan right here. I'll give everybody an overview of the site and landscape improvements, specifically the hardscape and planting. But just before I get into that, I want to, you know, mention what Jackie was saying, that this is a complex site and the 2D plan doesn't really give you a good understanding of the different levels and grade change. And we think the arc, we're really excited about this project and think the architects did a great job of breaking up the site into different buildings that create a bunch of fun, public and private landscape spaces like the streetscape and the courtyards that I'll talk about shortly. So I'm going to start with Burdis Avenue at 11 Burdis. And I'm going to go clockwise around to 21 and 25, and then to the townhomes. And then I'll finish with the courtyards. So the hardscape along Burdis is to match the existing conditions. It's the red brick pavers that we see throughout downtown. And then as you go from 11 Burdis, you'll go to the first driveway curb cut, which is one curb cut as opposed to two that is existing now. And then it creates this vehicular and pedestrian space with a green wall on the left side, as you can see, and small bollards to separate the vehicular from the pedestrian walking space. Then as we go to the corner of Burdis and Cherry, there's that existing wall on the corner that we're going to soften up with shrubs. And then we're going to keep the existing honey locusts on the corner of Burdis and Cherry, redo the wall with the native stone, fieldstone material. And then underneath it, we're going to soften it up with perennials, shrubs, as well as new street trees that are going to give it a more downtown streetscape experience. Then as we're coming down Cherry, you're going to go across the one-way exit, and you're going to come to the townhome, townhome areas. We're going to have street trees there as well as ornamental trees to give it a more residential and front door experience. We're also using perennial grasses to anchor the buildings into the landscape and soften them. As we get down towards Frontier, we're going to use some evergreen screening to, you know, hide the back of house parking lot that's adjacent to the parking lot. And then behind the townhomes, this is where the, you know, the 2D plan doesn't help, but there's a cantilevered landscape that creates these private spaces. So townhomes two and three will have little outdoor patios and we'll get some ornamental shrubs, trees and a shade tree on the corner of Town Home Two. And then I'll get into the courtyard. So below that, that's where the townhome cars will park underneath this cantilevered landscape. And there'll be plantings down at that courtyard level as well. So some birches that'll peek up over the top of the railings with some architectural pavers that could be potentially pervious as well as some ground cover at the corner of the building. The last two areas are the two roof courtyards at 11 Burdis and 2125 Burdis. These are more of the private spaces. It was mentioned earlier that 11 Burdis would be more of a playful space. So for fun, you know, a fun space for kids, families to hang out. And then 21 to 25 Burdis would be more of a outdoor entertaining with seating, outdoor grills, just a relaxation space. The idea is to do some raised planters in there, get some trees with some ground cover planting, site furnishings and some vines growing up the trellises. In addition to that, I think we have, if you look on the far right of Roof Courtyard, 21 to 25, there's some ornamental trees that are anchoring the end, creating a backdrop that makes it more of a private space. So you're not overlooking the street and the commercial buildings across the street. I think that's it. If I haven't answered any, any, anything, any questions, I'd be happy to do so later.
What's also unique about the the way the landscaping helps to frame and soften the site is something that we spoke to earlier in the presentation, which is and also where our 824 application comes in. And I'm highlighting here on the on the survey. About to pass out is to show you the 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 property line is is here. But the you can see a little bit closer. You can pass that down. It's just survey, which is in the record. There's a significant amount of space between where the property line ends and where this even the sidewalk and or certain portions of the street begin. And so and that that does create a new opportunity to increase and add some of that landscaping in and speaking with, obviously, we'll speak with the tree ward and all of the plantings are themselves on the property. But that width allows some of the the trees and things to be planted. Also, what is amazing, I think I mentioned this earlier, is that from an engineering perspective, and we'll we'll turn to our engineer in a moment, is that the site is, this is a true redevelopment and in that the site is already mostly impervious. It's a de minimis fractional increase to impervious surface. And that's really just the way that it's the calculation itself. So I must speak to that in a minute. But it, that does create less of a challenge from an engineering perspective, both for the talent and for the developer. Because we have a certain existing condition. But if you were to compare this plan to what's out there today, I mean, it looks like a sea of asphalt. So this is a very nice and tremendous improvement. We as we speak to engineers, I just wanted to speak to another, another matter, which is in some of our, in our special permit roster, which has to do with our our building locations. So we are requesting special permits for certain setbacks. Again, these are very de minimis. And you can also see, I liked the way you did that, Tom. You can see that small hatched out triangle right at where the driveway mouth is. That is the piece. That is the parcel K owned by the town again, right there. Thank you, Lynn. The the townhomes, the buildings are fairly close. There is a requirement under the the code, and that is also captured in your regulations about the distances between buildings. And we're requesting a special permit, which is permitted under the regulations to decrease that distance between Town Home One and 11 Burdis and the other two. And that's designed in our review with the fire marshal so that it's consistent with the fire code. It can be, although we don't have comments formally backed from the fire marshal, he's comfortable with the distances that are currently represented between the buildings because he has access to all of them, given the exposure, the street exposure to all of the buildings, they're able to get a fire truck and to take a hose to access any of these buildings. And there are certain fire ratings and fire codes that can be implemented on the architectural side and the fire code side that would make them safe and habitable. And that we understand is the is the reason why you have some have that distance regulation within or that that distance measurement within your regulations to be consistent with with fire codes. So we could speak to that more, too. But from an engineering perspective, that's also been been reviewed and calculated and studied. And we think that we're in good shape on that. But from a runoff stormwater management, I think that this can all be very safely captured. You know, that you've responded, Emma, to to the DPW. Remember, if you'd like to come up and just generally to that, that would be helpful. And if you do have nuanced questions about that now, we're happy to answer those, too.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emma Brewer from BHB. We're the civil engineers for the project and we're located at 50 Main Street in White Plains. So I believe the color graphic is maybe a few, yep, that slide. So Jackie and the rest of the project team has already discussed kind of the layout of the site. So I'll just be focusing more on the utilities. So starting with stormwater, we're planning to capture the runoff from the site in a series of underground detention systems. And this will allow us to detain the stormwater to match peak runoff rates under existing conditions. So we're not increasing any runoff off the site for the proposed conditions. And once it comes through the underground detention system and through an outlet control structure, the runoff will be directed to a water quality unit, which will treat the water before discharging it into the town system. And right now, we're showing our outlet into Cherry Street. And this is the exact connection point. We're still reviewing and working through with the engineering department to find the best, the best location to connect that. So the the stormwater system will comply with state with state and local regulations. And that is both for quantity and quality. And we did receive comments from Maria and the engineering department, and we're working to address those comments with her. So we'll be revising the stormwater report to address all of those comments. And then the other point that I wanted to touch on was the sewer connection. So we're showing the sewer connecting from all of the existing buildings and out into Cherry Street. We did receive comments that we should clean, televise and monitor the flow in those existing sewer mains out into Cherry Street to confirm that there is existing capacity to connect into those sewers. So we are currently working on that and we will be coordinating with the engineering department and the sewer department on that. In addition to stormwater and sewer, we are also showing connections to the water mains for each building, electric. And I think as Philip mentioned earlier, heating will be through geothermal. So there's no gas for this site. And generally, that that covers the utilities. So there any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And I don't have any special permits that are related to to that. And the, I think the good news is too, and in the multiple communications that we've had with town and with DPW that when the engineering department that we can, we can accommodate all of their requests and questions. The I'd like also to invite our traffic consultant up now, too. Would you like to to speak a little bit to to that? Once, something I should say is that, you know, that you've had multiple applications in the downtown over the last several years, and you've also had an extensive study done with with the library application. So we have as a team, studied those, reviewed those and are aware of some of the sensitivities and the have taken those into consideration as part of the report that you have.
Hello, I'm Emily Foster with SLR Consulting. We completed the traffic study for the proposed development. If you don't mind going This is if you could go up back one more, yeah. So we completed the traffic impact study quickly. The three study intersections were Elm at Main, Burdis and Cherry and Cherry at Main, and then the proposed exit driveway. And we looked at data collection, review of roadway conditions, the site-generated traffic volumes. We assessed the future traffic operations with and without the proposed development. And then we also looked at the driveway site distance. Next slide, please. So the proposed development is only expected to generate 11 peak hour volumes in the morning and 16 in the afternoon. And then if you could go to the next slide, please. So that, as talked about previously, the site does have a few existing office and commercial buildings. With those fully occupied, they are expected to generate over 30 volumes in the morning and 75 in the afternoon. So with the redevelopment, we're really seeing a reduction in traffic at the site. However, just to provide a conservative analysis, we we didn't subtract the existing site trips out. So we're really showing you a really conservative estimation and evaluation. So if you go to the next slide, please. And so I won't go into this because we've talked about this a lot, but it, there it will be a one-way access driveway. So all inbound traffic will go through Burdis Street. And be given that that's one way, all inbound traffic will go from Main Street to Burdis Street, and then all outbound traffic will turn right on Cherry Street. And again, no trucks or vans will use that inner driveway. And so for our evaluation, we looked at level of service at the intersections and level of service is a grade that's given to intersections based on the level of delay and inconvenience to the driver. And level of service A to D are generally good operations and good conditions. So all the intersections are expected to operate well without the project. And then with the project, they are expected to operate the same level of service. And again, that's conservative because we kept the existing trips in there as well. And then the final slide. And for intersection site distance, given that it is right out only, we had to look at the site triangle, looking to the left. And given that the 85th percentile speed was around 27 miles per hour, that is 298 feet of site distance. And so within that red triangle, items have to remain under three feet to provide the clear site distance. And we have found that it does meet the DOT minimum requirements. So site distance will be good from the driveway.
Lynn, do you mind coming back to the to the site plan, to the other, to the landscape plan or the color site plan, please? I I just like to take this opportunity now to to speak through some of the special permit criteria. And what I've, what we've done here, too, is attempted to provide you, since this was a voluminous number of special permit asks, tried to put it all into chart form into two, one onto a zoning chart and the other into just an itemized, easy-to-read narrative rather than putting it a sentence, sentence, sentence to have two columns. So you could easily go back during during our hearings, during your review of the materials and deliberation to to review those, including several references to the 2014 Town Plan of Conservation and Development, which highlights, we pulled out sections here of many reasons why this is an appropriate redevelopment of this site and why it's compatible with your expectations for the downtown. And first and foremost, you've created a very unique opportunity where a property in business A has the ability via special permit requests to utilize certain entitlement rights under the retail B zone, which many properties have used and taken advantage of in the last prior years to great success. And so it has, it, there is a mix that we're using where we're accessing the underlying permitted uses in in the A zone and then using the B zone to to enhance those opportunities, all which we think are supported by that, by the town plan, which speaks to nurturing the downtown, creating development and activities which are pedestrian-friendly and oriented to promote appropriate development, talking about multi-story, moderate density, mixed-use developments that really can help change supporting lifestyles in town, both for entry-level young families and all in singles and also for for seniors and having senior housing available in the downtown per your senior senior study. The plan also talks about specifically increasing housing in and near the downtown, which we think this does and contributes to a more diverse housing portfolio. So it's with with some of those recommendations in mind that we access some of the special permit opportunities. And those specifically are in your narrative, we've talked to some of the now, reading from them just because they're they're so specific. And some of them are very, some of them are simple, just procedural, and some of them will require a little bit more conversation now. Under 43D1A, I'm going to list the retail B, starting with our retail B ones. We are requesting that the dwelling units here are larger than what are otherwise permitted. So here, it's 1,500 square feet are identified for dwelling units permitted in the business A zone. If we did, we could do this, we could actually build a very, very dense, assuming we could park it, we can build a very dense development here. But it's not what we think the downtown needs. We think this is the, we've definitely right-sized it at 21 or 25 units. 21 is the base density according to the regulations we can have. And then we're utilizing some of the bonus density that is derived from providing the affordable units on onsite. In fact, when we do that calculation, we think we can achieve up to 27 units. But again, in right sizing the units for the market and for the site, I have landed on requesting 25 units. So that's in a special permit as well. But when we also look at the mix of units, we are looking to have units as small as 1,023 square feet to a maximum of about 3,400 square feet, where the average of 1,500 is expected, a square feet is expected per unit in in your regulations. So we've seen this utilized before, where you're allowing for a range, and that allows for a nicer housing mix and opportunity for bedroom size. And on that also, two-bedroom units are permitted in the business A zone pursuant to the retail B standards. And here we're asking for a range of one, two and three-bedroom mixes, where a two-bedroom is always is what the regulations call for. And we're asking for that mix because we think that that is also what is desirable for a diverse desirable for a diversity of housing opportunity. Specifically, we have four, one, we're proposing four, one bedrooms, 11 two bedrooms and 10 three bedrooms. Under four, three, D, one, C, it is the density calculation using the retail B standards. I have to ask for that specifically. The regulation requires that the total number of dwelling units is counted at one unit per 15 square feet of lot area. And so that is where we get our, would drive our 21 base units from using that calculation. But I do have to ask specifically for that calculation to be permitted. Under four, three, D, one, D, we are requesting various alternative layout standards and increased density. We're allowed to do that under the business A zone per the special permit approval under retail B. That makes the front yard, the front yard setback consistent on Burdice with with the building line. We spoke to that before. That allows portions of the proposed building or the stair to the the building itself is at the building line, but some of the stair projections go beyond that and they can be located up to that property line. It's a very nuanced section of your regulations. But this is, this can be permitted and achieved in a few different ways under your regulations. But under four, four, eight, E, or four, seven, six, C. But the location of the sidewalk helps maintain that setback that Phil spoke to earlier today. That five foot minimum distance between the property line and the curb creates a functional setback. So while we are asking for some relief, we're actually not taking the building up to up to that building line. So again, this is one of the the more procedural ones. The curvature for also, for instance, on Cherry Street, that necessitates this request. You can see where that line is fairly clearly here. And it does result in a superior design. And that also is allowing us to tier the townhomes in such a way to to work with the curves. Very difficult to build, build a building without geometry and also allows for us to maximize the location for some of the landscaping. We spoke earlier also to permit a reduction of the minimum distance between the buildings. We are requesting seven feet in lieu of the 12 feet required. And that is respect to townhomes two and three between those two. And then between building one and townhouse one. Up a little bit to the north. So really, it's the unique jog in that property at the Westerly and rear side. It just restricts where we're putting the buildings. And we've spoken to the fire marshal about the the safety of that as well and think that that can be safely achieved. We are also permitting or requesting a side yard setback of 1.3 in lieu of the six feet required on the Westerly side yard. So you can see there, Lynn, do you mind just taking your cursor to the left over to 11 Burdice? Now, all the way to the property line. So you can see there's to the left side of 11 Burdice down. There you go. That is, that is the area that we're asking for. There's a pinch point of where the cursor is right now that you can see. The the existing building is actually built right on the properly property line right now. And so this condition actually presents a modest improvement over the existing conditions. But most buildings on this side of Burdice have been built in close proximity to one another and to the building line over time. So there is not a significant change, a significant change in conditions here. And then you, the unique grading on the property also presents a development challenge in where to where to put this this space or this building. And then finally, we're asking for an increased density to 25 units under section seven, six, C, three, where the affordable units, the required minimum are required on site. And so we provide those two. We think again, that increase, that increase, the increase supports the diversity of housing options in the downtown. Moving on under section four, three, D, four and five, we need to request a special permission to hide our parking. I know that's over time, that's become a very desirable amenity. And under the retail B and business A hybrid, we have to request the permission to have an underground parking area and also a parking deck. And we think as we've shown you tonight, that those also result in a superior design. Number one, we are concealing the parking. And number two, it provides new ways to achieve different types of landscaping on the site. Under four, four, D, one, we have to permit, we have to request the non-office use by special permit. That would allow us to have a commercial space on the ground floor level. And that's consistent. It's in 11 Burdice. It's consistent with the ground floor commercial space that's there today. So we think that that is a a useful, consistent use on the site. Again, I repeat one about the underground parking, four, eight, C, this is to do with the front yard setbacks. And it's a request to, again, make that building line consistent. That's consistent with what we see under four, three, D, one. Because we have the two zones, we have to make sure that we're asking for these regulations. We're asking for the special permit under both sections where they where they marry up. So again, a procedural one. The, again, under four, eight, F, that's our side yard setback consistent with the other. Under four, nine, E is a floor area ratio exception. That's to permit the exclusion of FAR of residential units under the retail B standards. This is permitted in a lot of different ways under your regulations. We landed on this in our our conversation with staff can alternatively be permitted under four, eight, L typically. And at this commercial zone, you would not have it, the regulations allow you to not count the FAR when they have a purely residential building like this. We think that makes good sense here. Under section six, two, E, two and four, that's our parking and loading request. We've talked about that a lot tonight. It will be modified. The way that it's requested right now in the in the application before you includes the inclusion of no additional loading spaces. But as you saw earlier in the image, we are now proposing to have the two spaces and maintain the existing on-street parking. So that will be modified after we have an opportunity to confer with, to confer with staff. Then the I think one of the more nuanced special permits that we're requesting come under seven, six, C, three and four. And that speaks to both the inclusion of the three onsite. Because of the calculation, we have a fractional, we came to you and for some clarification of this in June. So we are looking for relief to provide a fractional fee and lieu payment. So we'd have three onsite because there's a fraction left over from that. We would pay that to the town through your fee and lieu program. Two is to permit some bonus height and story calculation. That would permit the townhomes to be up to three and a half stories. And and it, I should say that, let me, let me make that a little bit more specific. The regulation itself allows for bonus height and stories to be up to three and a half stories in 50 feet. In both the retail, and this is where our two zones are together, our retail A and I'm sorry, business A, retail B, both permit currently 30 feet in height, two and a half stories. And for the most part, that is respected here. We have the, the, the two main buildings are are both within that, within that zone. I'll speak to very, to it very specifically in a moment. But then the townhomes due to their location and the change in the grade are three stories. So I cite to the the general section, but I can go through the exact heights with you in a moment with Phil. And then also to permit the basement and building two to not be counted as a story. It that's a nuanced part of your regulations and speaking with staff, we wanted to call that out because that's amenity space. It's not actual living space. And because the majority of it is underground and then part of it is exposed, we have to do call that out and we'll, we'll speak to that as well. And finally, to permit one additional unit under the bonus density calculation, getting us up to 25. And to build to that building line. So those are, those are our specific tasks. Lynn, if you, if you could please go backwards a few slides, just to get me to the elevations, the street elevation material, please. Phil, would you like to come up and speak to, speak to height with me? Because I want to have this in in the record. I know that questions have been asked about it by you and by neighbors. And this also represents the grade change. I'll let you walk, walk through this, but let's just, I'm going to give you this data right here. My data.
So I'm just going to quickly go through this because we really want to hear your guys' comments. And I know we've gone long and I know you guys retired and go along oftentimes. So just to talk through it really quickly, 11 Burdice as a, as a technical measure, ends up being 30 feet, 10 inches. Then 21, 25 Burdice ends up being, when we technically measure, maybe Jen, you would be better at reading this than me. Like, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Jen, you want to, why don't you come up and read it? Sorry, commissioners, I'm trying to do this quickly. So you guys get some comments.
Okay.
Thanks. So building one, 30 foot, 10 inches, two and a half stories. Building two is 33 foot, three, which is 21, 25 Burdice. That's also two and a half stories. Townhouse one is 35 foot, eight. Townhouse two, 37 foot, 11. Townhouse three, 38 foot, four. And townhouse four, 39 foot, one. And these are the per year zoning calculations, the building heights from average grade.
And changes in these obviously goes to the grade of the site. And we include in our, in our materials, some justifications for for these in in our special permit criteria. We've included a very detailed narrative as to why we think that they meet these standards. The opportunity to bonus height has is prevalent in your regulations, depending on your zone, especially within different downtown zones. Certainly, it's available within the in the B zone as well as, but but not in the A zone unless it comes in in a different way, even though there are several other ways to offer bonusing for heights. And I, in my estimation, where the, where the grade changes significantly, it also lends itself to to the flexibilities that you have infused into these regulations. I think what is helpful and important to know is that our two multifamily buildings are are very modest increase, permitted to have up to 30 feet in the zone in height. And we are looking at just over 30 feet for one building and about 33 feet for the other. The townhomes are higher with that, you know, that peaked roof as we to calculate it at with the highest at 39, 39, one. So not exceeding 40 at any point. But we do think that with the inclusion of those affordable units on site, that that creates a nice opportunity to to exercise some of the the flexibilities for height under the regulations. It's also consistent, as you can see, the the effort to make it consistent with the buildings that are around it in in the renderings, you could see that. And also in some of the special permits that have been permitted for the the buildings beyond it. So there is a consistency throughout the downtown that has been exercised through these special permit height bonusing. However, what you did see from us, and this was in conversations with you and with our neighbors from January, has been decreased. So the buildings have also, if you'd like to speak to how you manage the roofs, but if you were to to compare what you had, you can see some significant step back in the roofing and in just the height of the building in general, both the, well, we provided you with the average grade heights and also the actual heights. So with that, we're happy to take any questions from you or the public.
Questions?
Chairman, I have a few questions. First, it's an observation. I like the change to including commercial at gray. I think I brought this up when you were here earlier because I'm also thinking about what's happening across the street.
Certainly.
Some older buildings that, at least in my opinion, in the course of time, may be torn down and rebuilt. And by having commercial there on on this site, as you're posing, there may be commercial on the opposite side. It becomes more of a business area, merchandise and more activity. And so I think providing for a substantial amount of commercial credit is a good idea. I'm also encouraged by the initiative to put some better street lighting in the street that really needs it. So I think that's a very good idea, in my opinion. One question, it would be on the ambulance. It wasn't mentioned. I'm wondering about ambulance access here in case someone is ill needing assistance and whether the ambulances we have in town are, can easily access the the site in order to remove someone who is who is ill. If you could speak to that, please.
Yes. So Fire Marshal reviews, you know, the the public, I should say, all public health and safety vehicles. In our meeting, we, which we had with multiple staff in town and did not identify that that would be a problem. Also because of Burdice, the main access to to the buildings. And this was, I think, his his greatest takeaway is that the main access to both buildings and to the townhomes are on Cherry and Burdice. There's one townhome, which is interior, but that is, it's so close beyond that building that he didn't identify at first sight with, as creating a problem for public health and safety at all. But I do await his final comments and we will be following up with him after this meeting to answer that question.
Thank you. It was also mentioned about geothermal on the site. What are your? What's the plan?
Let let me invite Jennifer up to speak to the geothermal or Philip.
Yeah. So right now, we're currently planning for 16 borings on the site, which will be used for the four townhomes. That should, for townhomes. And then the solar panels on the roof, those we are anticipating for all the power and all the common spaces in the two multifamily buildings. And then the rainwater harvesting for irrigation and water closets throughout the project.
So the, there'll be some geothermal on site.
Correct.
I assume you tested the geology of the place to be sure you can do that since it's very site specific.
We, what we are planning on, we have not done that yet.
My understanding on geothermal is that, one, you need water and two, you need hot rocks barely near the surface.
No.
I mean, the notion around geothermal is that essentially you're dealing with the temperature differential between the earth and the heating and cooling requirements of the building. So in terms of whether or not you need, you don't need hot rocks and you don't need, basically, it's a well that's drilled. And the differential between the temperature at the bottom of the well, basically the earth's temperature is then used to differentiate to the cooling or the heating of the building above. So there's no, it's, it's actually kind of a simple technology. And it's essentially a straight drill, straight down into the earth. And we're proposing, how many, Jen, 16, 16 of them? We've done the calculations based on preliminary investigations with regards to the temperature differential. But it's not, it's basically, you can do geothermal wells anywhere here in Connecticut. It's actually a really sustainable way to provide heating and cooling for any, I mean, it can be a house. It can be retail. It can be a commercial. So it's, it's not, I would say it's cutting edge technology because it costs a little more. But I wouldn't say it's cutting edge technology because it's pushing the limits of what our physical world can handle. So.
You mentioned rainwater and gray water and water closets. So that is like thermal board, bullet flushing?
Correct, correct. Our, our hope is that we can and again, I think the H P spoke a little bit about it, Emma, around the idea that we can use rainwater harvesting to not overtax the sewer system here. And so that's sort of our goal set. And we've done a bunch of calculations and understood how much rainwater we can capture, obviously the cisterns and this and sort of holding the rainwater back and then using it accordingly. We're very, I mean, our hope is that at the end of this project, we're, you know, a lead platinum project. I can't say that right now. But as you all know, our aspirations are very high to provide. as you all know, our aspirations are very high to provide a very sustainable development here, so. Um also, uh I didn't uh landscaping, final landscaping plan?
See, we only have the color in our deck today.
Yeah. The, this is probably not the final landscaping plan, but the bones and the structure are there with the trees and the shrubs. Uh the ground covers may change, and we haven't gotten into quantities because we're not at a final plan yet. Uh and the courtyards uh at eleven Birtis and twenty-one, twenty-five Birtis may change a little as well, but the bones of the plan are up here.
When you say bones, the planet means?
The structure.
Tree.
Trees, shrubs. Yes, yeah.
But the actual, which tree, which bush is not.
They have been selected. If uh you look at
Quite done yet, I'm wondering.
If you look at SP one point oh, there's a proposed planting schedule with plant varieties and quantities and sizes. But you'll.
May change.
But the trees and shrubs are pretty locked in.
Okay.
As long as the site plan doesn't change, but the ground cover materials and stuff like that may, we didn't wanna quantify that yet uh because things may change a little.
What, what considerations have you made for native plantings as well as um bullet pollinator and, you know, bird-friendly types of plants?
Good question. So all the plant materials are gonna be either native or adaptive, you know, suitable for this region of the US. Uh in the pollinators, uh we'll, we'll probably use some more of that up in the courtyard areas versus the streetscape, and also probably in those backyard patio areas. So those are kind of the materials that we haven't finalized yet, uh but we will.
Was my.
You're welcome.
Chairman, thank you.
Question.
So go ahead.
I've got a question for your uh traffic consultant. On the uh intersection site distance, um that cone there go, there are going to be parked cars on the long curve. Won't those cars block that site?
Um so parked cars aren't included, cuz as part of that, they need to clear because they um there will be distances in between them and they won't always be there, but we did include a bulb out at the intersection, which pushes the cars out a little bit further, so you have a little bit more space before a car is parked there, and then you also have more space for the car to inch out without it getting into the traveling before it will, so it'll see better.
What about a truck? I mean, at some point, y- you're gonna have your vision blocked by a vehicle.
Yeah, that, I mean, that is the case in an urban environment, but according to DOT standards, parked cars don't, aren't included as having to be clear in the site triangle.
Thank you.
I can, can you talk a little bit more about feedback from the fire marshal about the ability for um fire trucks and associated aerial equipment to navigate potentially throughout the site, access egress and the driveway?
Uh sure, I'm happy to report on, on the, what was shared in our joint meeting. However, I would defer to him, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, and uh his final report may, may say differently. But again, the site is uniquely shaped in that uh it can be accessed with the, with the exception of townhouse four, which is in the, which is in the center. Uh the perimeter of the building can be accessed uh on Berta Street and on Cherry Street. And then also, as right now, we do have the luxury of accessing that townhome four and the rear of eleven Birtis through the adjacent parking lot. And while that can't be taken into consideration for a long-term plan, from a practical perspective, uh emergency services will use any area or accessway available to them. That's land is owned by Frontier. Um I know that there, there've been communications um between the applicant and, and Frontier, but don't know that that building or that is going anywhere, um and if it will remain uh accessible, i- it can't, the fire marshal will not be able to make that statement over time because don't own that land, but from a practical approach, there is access to it as of right now. From uh the one way, you don't necessarily need to get down, because again, you have access and you can pull and snake uh hosing throughout the site and around the buildings, um and there's space in between the buildings as well to access upper levels. That was what I, was identified uh to us, and I'm certain that his report will take that back and make it consistent with.
Do you know if um, if all the proposed uh screening and landscaping was incorporated at the time that the fire marshal reviewed?
Yes, we did have it, we did have a draft plan. In fact, the entire application was filed at the time that we met, filed our application in May. We met with the fire marshal in early June, so uh what the, the, what materials you have before you or the materials the fire marshal had before them?
Thank you.
On the um the access path through the courtyard and the circulation through the site, um there's a bit of a discrepancy on the architectural drawings and the latest set, uh townhouse one is a little bit bigger in some of the drawings.
Okay.
And got a little bit smaller uh on others, I, I assume to allow access through there, and it's a pretty tight corner coming around there. Has that been studied in terms of the turn radiuses, cuz that's also a pedestrian entrance way to come into that courtyard to get to those homes to the back? So is there gonna be a conflict in terms of people shooting out around the corner and pedestrians coming into the courtyard?
We're working on uh, on an internal circulation study, we don't have that prepared uh for tonight, right? But the, the, the circulation study for inside for those, so we have studied the turning rate, and we cannot bring a truck in there, but it can't access SUVs, it can access any traditional what, what do we like, vehicle, right? The aver- the average person's car, um even a large car, but it cannot, um it cannot accommodate a large truck. We will have, I, I, I can look through um those with the team and respond to you more substantively.
And then townhouse one, that's the only one that doesn't have any internal parking, where will they park?
I believe they have parking spaces in twenty-five or in eleven, in eleven.
Eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Uh commercially, you mentioned the commercial uh use on Birtis, how many commercially used currently exists on Birtis? And square footage?
I don't know if I have that number offhand. Um in eleven, it is four hundred, it's approximately four hundred square feet. That's what's, that's what's, right, that's what's proposed in eleven, that's what exists on the ground floor in eleven, I believe it's a nail, it's still nail salon?
I know, it's eighty-four square.
Okay. And so that would be a, a consistent metric that would remain.
Proposed.
That's the only commercial that is proposed. Twenty-one and twenty-five, there are mixed commercial uses within two uh residential buildings right now, those are, that's how that's used, but there's nothing in there.
But suppose there's no commercial in twenty-one or twenty-five?
Yes.
Trash room, we talked about that briefly. There is no trash chute to get down from the apartments down, so people are hoofing it down to the trap, dropping off.
Um yeah, there's, there's elevators from each of the units, so they'll be bringing their trash down in their own elevator down to the parking level, and they're actually dump it into a, the sorting facility, which will be refrigerated.
Gotcha. And then how many of the units in twenty-one, twenty-five and eleven um dedicated private elevators?
Um so the, basically, the four units at the top of twenty-one, twenty-five have devi- dedicated elevators. Uh and then there's a shared elevator for the plaza level units, and then in eleven, the four units have their, at the top, have their own dedicated elevator. And the three units at the plaza level have a shared elevator.
Shared as well.
Yep.
When the parking, um even if you're parking out with parking, um that'll be up to each of the residents to manage and use and take care of.
Correct.
And what's the total parking count?
Fifty-one, fifty-one spaces.
Fifty-one? Does that include the townhouses, or is that just?
That includes the townhomes, it can give you the breakdown too.
So then fifty-one minus six, right?
Correct.
So that uh, that's a parking reduction relative to bedroom units, right?
I'm sorry, I don't.
In, in terms of the, the town code, uh as to number of parking units required per bedroom?
I, I don't know that calculation.
We, we didn't do the calculation that way, so we have um let's see, parking commercial is one space per two hundred square feet, so we have two spaces that in eleven Birtis dedicated to the four hundred square for commercial. Then for the single-family dwellings, two units require, uh two spaces, requires four spaces, that's conforming. Then the multifamily, when you have uh four units, at two spaces each, four spaces, that's conforming. And then nineteen units at.
Four units?
Oh, so we did, um well, it's, if you look in your chart here, I can show you this, maybe, maybe if I don't repeat it, it will be easier. The only special permits that are required in our review uh with, with staff before we made this, is that the underground parking and the decking is required, and then the loading space, not having it on site, even though now we are, we've modified it to try to have one onsite. But the actual residential uh units here, pass it to you. You can just see our breakdown there.
Right, so, but as far as number of units, number of parking spaces required, what, what are you looking for in terms of a reduction to get to the twenty-nine?
We didn't, we didn't need the reduction, I mean, it essentially comes out to two, you know.
Unit per, two spaces per unit.
It comes out to, not, and then it's but then you have, like, it's really, it's like one and point nine something, it's fractional because.
You have a couple one-bedroom units, which require one and a half parking spaces, so we're actually, we're actually, number of parking spaces we have here is actually in excess of the required amount of spaces.
By one.
By one.
I, I can provide you with a, a further breakdown of that, I think in the that's just my zoning chart, but I know somewhere else I have that probably written up in our narrative, so I, I can provide you with a more specific reference to the regulation. Following up to this meeting.
And then as far as the um sewer tie-ins and the further due diligence, you're gonna be scoping those and further design is required before you can determine size, flow, capacity, tie-in, impact, all that.
Our, our hope is that we're gonna use the manhole on site, which is actually located just at the current uh in and out of the Cherry Street lot, and so we're gonna be scoping that, we have a um uh contract that's coming, uh we're dealing with contracting it right now, but it's scoping and then cleaning and determining, I think it's, what is it, two-thirds, I'm talking out of turn, cuz I'm an architect. Right, like, I think it's two-thirds capacity um that we're gonna be complying with, so our hope is that the existing connection across Cherry, that we don't have to mess with Cherry Street, and that the manhole on our site actually can deal with that.
And then uh solar panels, you mentioned that the, the core elements of the two multi-fam, multi-unit housing, uh the core elements will be powered by solar panel.
Correct, that's our, that's our hope, so.
Plan currently doesn't show any solar panels, so and given the design of the roof, where do you?
It's, it's actually, I don't know, Jen, if you have, it's on the sustainability plan, I don't know if you guys. Yeah.
Say again?
PZ five hundred?
PZ. PZ. Five hundred. And so sort of one of the features, the roof shaping is to actually capture that um angle on the upper, so that it isn't visible from the public realm.
Is on the upper tier.
Correct.
Or on the upper shallow slope roofs.
That's right, that's our hope.
Got it. And then um were there other materials that you had considered for the exterior finishes? You've got the limestone, uh granted, you know, you, you guys have done a great job of scaling it down and making it more contextual to the neighborhood.
Thank you, we're trying.
Um but as far as the materials, these seem to be similar materials to what was previously shown. Were you considering any others? Uh the, the Roman brick is new.
Right.
The limestone is a carryover from the previous application.
Yep.
Are there others that you were thinking about?
I, I mean.
Specifically from the multifamily?
I mean, we can, I, I mean, we considered other, I mean, we thought about other types of brick for the multifamily, like, truth be told, we, we you know, we feel like stone, the, and it's actually something back to the, to the um comments about the, the fire department chief, the, both these buildings are concrete. Um as are the, the four townhomes are stick uh with uh uh brick separation between them, so our construction classification is actually super important to creating that, that level of safety on the site, and so putting wood on the outside of a concrete structure felt a little off to us, we considered it, um we looked at brick on the multifamily as well, we felt that brick on the multifamily would become too vast, right, there, because it is a, a large structure and it is concrete, that that trying to do something in brick may not be appropriate. Um because we are trying to deal with scale and trying to be respectful of, you know, you have a brick building across the way with the um, the beauty salon, and you have the, the limestone building, which is the chase building, I think, and then you have the long brick facade, and it's, it's actually a comment we got the last time about that narrowness. And we felt like by keeping the, the dimensioning um larger, that it wouldn't feel quite so compacted. I, we, but truth be told, we did consider, we heard you and, and we thought about it, I, I hope the, I mean, I really think the materials and, and the, the limestone, actually, we worked really hard to find a really warm limestone, because we think that the darkness of that facade um along Birtis, because it is uh north-facing, was really super important, so that warmth is what we were trying to get at. Um but we did, truth be told, we heard you one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have, I just have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure which person on the team is appropriate, so.
Well, I'll stand up.
Here together. And, and I do wanna compliment you, I think that this application has come a long way, and it's very thoughtful and it's very creative, so thank you for the work that you've done. Um so I wanted to ask about unit sizes and unit mixes.
Oh, sure.
A bit, um so as you explained, Jackie, you have to request a special permit to do over fifteen hundred square foot units and, or two bedrooms in the um business A-zone. And um I, have you reviewed, Jackie, or have you seen our affordable housing plan that we just submitted to the state back in June?
I have, but
Okay.
Not look it in context with, with these numbers that you're asking.
Yeah, so.
I can.
One of the things that plan found is that in New Canaan, we have um kind of this missing middle piece of the housing stock, we have a lot of really big houses. We have some small apartments, but we kind of miss the middle, and so I think by increasing unit sizes here, not not, I'm not saying anything over fifteen hundred square feet is a problem, but I think when you start to get up to three thousand square feet, thirty-five hundred square feet, you're really verging on the size of a single-family home at that point, and I guess I question whether we need more of that, clearly, I'm not as schooled in the market as your team is, so I, I don't know, I'm sure the market wants it, but I question whether we need it and whether it further contributes to some unaffordability that we have in this town.
That's a, that's a great question, I can do a little bit more research into that, the answer, so I can give you a, a, a more thoughtful answer. I know that the unit mix was looked at uh very, very thoroughly and specifically at the beginning, I'm sure, in response to um, to your own research about, about sizes. I, I can go through this, do you want me to go through the mix, uh the mixes and the sizes now, or is that something you'd like me to respond to?
So, yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm familiar with those, so yeah, I guess I just would ask your team uh, you know, to give me a good reason why we need to go up to those sizes, and if, if we can't do more.
One of my, my quick responses is, and we, we'd. One of my, my quick responses is, and we we'd spoken about this right back together, back earlier in the. Oh, when we crunched the numbers of what can be achieved under the A zone, it's the other extreme of of maybe some larger units that you're looking at. Um, I think that for a a three-bedroom unit, there are uh roughly. There are ten units that are proposed as three-bedroom units, and so it's a a stronger mix of uh two and three, and there are eight units that are proposed um as one-bedroom units. Um, the affordable units are uh are proposed right now as one-bedroom units, and certainly it's at the commission's discretion if they want that to be a different, a different unit mix. Um, but the the other extreme is that under the A zone, you can have these mi- mo- mostly like a micro unit. So you can have a really, really dense site with. Very, very small units, which is maybe not, uh, it's certainly not, I think, what you want for for your market and in designing the site, but also right sizing it in terms of. Traffic and uh pedestrian activity, and it is a a modest size. Development. Um, you know, comparatively, it's nice to have these mid like teens and into the teens and early twenties, like a low, a lower number and to create. Um, a different, a different size. I think one of the expectations to going into this um by the applicant is that some of the units that are. Two bedrooms or even three bedrooms could be used as for uh work, work from home and to have that additional kind of in-home office space that the while it is identified as a bedroom is not necessarily. Going to always be used as a bedroom. Um, and that would, and those are for the market rate units, of course, of, you know, certainly there are different standards for the affordability. Uh, for the affordable units. We've uh. Used, we've provided you today with a copy uh to staff of the affordability of a draft affordability plan, and I'm happy to. Uh, work with you and work with staff uh because I think this would be the first application that may have submitted one um that hopefully will be approved. So we're happy to to write. Uh, to right-size that plan uh with you, but I'll certainly give a little, if you'd like to respond to it now, uh, or we can respond in writing.
I think just from a market and design perspective. We we really felt like we wanted to offer an array of sizes. And so we, because we think this is really unique property for. Downtown New Canaan. And we felt like there may be folks who would want a three-bedroom unit, who want a two-bedroom unit, folks who want. One-bedroom unit. So we tried to to bring a mix. We didn't go in and say, okay, we're going to do. Tons of this or tons of that or tons of anything like we really um. Tried to equalize it in a way that we thought um. Really could bring something to downtown that wasn't, you know. We read the regulations and seven hundred and fifty square feet of, you know, fifty units at seven fifty square feet is crazy. We tried to be mindful of what you have. And um. Tried to to fill a gap in a way and not be, you know, super large or super small. Um, were we successful? I I hope it's the right number. I don't I don't know. It's hard to say. So but anyway, we tried.
Okay.
This is um, this is Commissioner Cassavant. Um, I'd like to comment on the affordability. Um, and I will withhold judgment on the overall density here, which I think is quite high. But you're adding or proposing fifty-six total bedrooms here. Only three of those bedrooms would be affordable under your proposal, as you've currently laid it out. Um, so I will tell you that from the chair I sit in. I think that's an unacceptable approach to the distribution of the affordable housing. Um, in effect, out of the fifty-six bedrooms to only have three for affordability. Um, is just inconsistent with the eight thirty G intent. Um, especially in light of the number and frequent reference to desire. To uh take advantage of the um. Eight thirty G uh plan in town to get significant concessions to density and other things. So I'll just offer that comment. I know we're not voting today. I'll just provide that commentary. And is you have not submitted an affordability plan, um, you know, we'll we'll look at it when it comes through. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. We did submit an affordability plan uh today so that we could. Uh, start this conversation with you and then advance it between now and our next hearing. But I'm certainly I'm happy to uh con- confer with staff. And if you have additional. Comments and thoughts that uh come after this meeting that you can share with staff about what you think is uh something that is acceptable, then that will help us. Prepare and respond for the next meeting.
Yeah, so I'll just give you an immediate reaction is I would think that if the proportionality, and this is consistent throughout the state. Is that if you have a mix of one, twos and threes, you would have a same mix of one, two and threes for um. For the affordability, certainly twos. Thank you. And did was that, that's not published anywhere yet because I couldn't find it online. Is that correct? The plan?
Plan?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. It it may not have been. It did.
Yeah, no, I, because I look forward to. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, I was gonna say the same thing Art did. He said it better than I did, so I won't. I won't follow up on that. Um, and I'm, I was gonna ask about the affordability plan. Um, I wanted to ask, I mean, so one of the thoughts I had, and again, I'm not an architect, I'm not schooled in the market, but. I feel like Town Home One feels sort of squeezed into the site and almost, I mean, not an afterthought. I know you need to use that space somehow. Um, but it just feels awkward. And so I was wondering if you did change their arrangement or the configuration of the unit sizes, maybe. By making some of the unit sizes smaller and building one and two, maybe you don't need. Town Home One, or maybe, or maybe there's another way to reorganize it. It just feels awkward and maybe a little bit in the way.
It it hurts my feelings. It's my favorite unit.
Oh.
It's my favorite unit. I think there there's something.
From the inside or the outside?
It both. I I think there's something unique about it being sort of nestled inside of the of the overall development. I know that sounds. Kind of crazy, but in the models we look at and when we walk through in three D, like it's actually a super interesting and sort of. Um. A a really unique space. It isn't on the street. It's sort of back by itself. It's protected from cherry. It has sort of uh its own unique sort of um. Place in the development. And I I understand what you're saying. Like at first, everybody's like, oh, picks. But to me, I, that's the one I would want to put into. So um. I don't know. We we looked at it. Definitely, we understand the the issue, but it's uh. I think from a design perspective, it's it sits in a really unique space, and I think the way you enter it. And how there's mul- the multiple levels, and I I know you can't see it here in a presentation, but. It it really is a a sort of unique condition here, and I know it's um. In in this two-D plan, it looks sort of uh stuffed in, but it it's been thought of.
It's how do you enter the upper two, the upper levels of Town Home One?
Uh, the upper levels. So uh, Jen, do you want to talk about? Yeah, can we? Oh, the rendering. We. So so the unique thing about this one is you can actually enter in. So it's two duplexes, one over another. So there are two units in there. Um, and you can see, you can enter the first one from the front here. I don't know if you guys can see that. And then the one, the market rate, which is up above, you actually enter from the back. Uh, along the side. I don't know if you, do you have the, can you go to the plan? Or when maybe in the plan I can show.
Well, that's what those stairs are for.
That's right. Correct. So if you go.
Down the alley.
Correct. So they they would actually park in eleven Birtis, and there would be an entry. Across eleven Birtis, and they would actually be able to enter up. So uh. I can't point at it. But in the space between eleven Birtis and uh Town Home One. That's where their entry would be. So there are two entries at grade into the into the townhome. You can, you can't see it.
Okay, we we need um.
Sorry.
We're now on two and a half hours. Um. Steve Kleppen, um, is is Steve out there in Zoom land?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, so commissioners, as you know, um, Steve is an advisor to the commission. And I thought it would be good to uh get some of his thoughts um for us to think about as well as for the applicant. Mr. Kleppen.
Sure, and I can be brief because I know you've been on a long time already and happy to. Um, answer any specific questions I had. Um, I had had shared some thoughts earlier. I I overall, I think it's a a smart project in a. Location that needs uh some attention, kind of a little bit of forgotten area, the downtown doesn't really connect as well to the. Uh, Main and Elm corridors as it could. Um, you know, I I density to me is kind of a misnomer that. It's not really an issue. I don't think in this area it's a pretty modest development in terms of it its size. So I don't think that. That in my opinion is not a concern. I think the, you know, a couple of thoughts that I had would be related more to the streetscapes. One on on the Birtis side, I I thought that. When you had the the first rendering up with the view looking from Main. Down Birtis, I think the uh, you know, I know it's a different building, a different uh design, but the. First existing building there had a lot of articulation to it and really kind of popped out. Whereas your facade i- is, and I know by design, but it's kind of a little bit on the flat side. I thought it could use. Something to kind of make it stand out a little bit more, so it's not just kind of. Forgotten back there. Um, and on the townhomes, I think they could be a little more street friendly in terms of. And it's something Lynn and I both were talking about in agreement on. Maybe there could be something to actually. Make them seem a little more street friendly in terms of. You know, maybe there's, they're actually the front entry is a little closer to the street. Maybe the porches are brought up a little more, some kind of more. Friendly brownstone kind of feel to it that it doesn't really have at the moment, but overall, I think conceptually it. It fits in really well. Um, very attractive looking overall. Seems like, you know, it's a good spot, and I think it'll. It'd be nice if somebody thought of something like this on the other side of the street too, to kind of complete things a little bit. Um. It's too bad you couldn't get hold of some of the property where the telephone company. Parking lot is because that would kind of get rid of that ugly fence and complete the the streetscape through there. But overall, I think it's it's a good project.
Thank you.
Um, commissioners, um, so we're, we're, I'm sure we're going, my guess is we're going to have at least two more hearings. Um. And uh maybe not Mr. Kruse.
I agree, at least two.
Anyway, um, commissioners, uh, of course, send um, send any additional questions, any thoughts to the planner as always. Um, but anything else, anything, anybody else is dying to get off their chest right now?
I have one. I would suggest, I I agree with the folks who've talked about the long-term housing aspects of this. And um, I would suggest that the applicant may want, may want to consider having of the three units, two being two-bedroom, one one-bedroom. And they're not in the same building. You don't want to have that low-income zone. Which I think is something we would like to avoid because two-bedroom means you have a family. Dwelling, and I think that is something we would, I would personally encourage. So my thoughts for the day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Kaufman, any closing remarks?
Thank you so much for all of your comments tonight and and for your time and flexibility. This was, uh, we appreciate it. I know how busy you are, uh, and and the applicants too, who uh who who traveled. It was. Okay. Very helpful for us to have this time with you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. This hearing is continued. Oh, by the way, um. I will not be taking public input on this hearing tonight just because we're. We're, we're under so much pressure. So. If anybody came here to make public comment on this application, I apologize. Um. But we will have the availability for public comment at our next hearing on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and blue make ourselves available to anyone uh in the public. Our information is available to to meet between now and the next meeting as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, thirty-nine Locusts were not opening. Eighty-six Summer was withdrawn. Uh, one fifty Rosebook were not opening. So item number five, twelve sixty-eight. Owen Oak Ridge Road upon application Joshua Wool- Wool Bridge of Glengate Company Authorized Agent for Amy and John Sales Owners for a special permit of sections three, four, C six. And three, four, C two, to allow construction of in-ground swimming pool within the front yard of the property and located within a hundred and fifty feet of Owen Oak Ridge. Who's here to present, please?
Uh, for the record, Rob Frangian, Frangian Engineering. Um, I'm the engineer for the application. Josh is on Zoom. So I don't know, uh, Lynn, if I got him. Okay. And hopefully this will be a slightly less complicated application than the one you just saw. So.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, uh, hopefully this is a uh a less, less lengthy one at least. Um, so uh, my name is Josh Holderich. I'm a a landscape architect of Glengate Company. And presenting on behalf of John and Amy Sales, which was just mentioned. Uh, I do apologize for not being there in person. I'm on vacation with my family. Uh, but Rob is there to uh help if there's, is there are any, you know, technical issues. Um, as well as uh Jack Fortuna, who's who's from our office as well. Um, so uh, my apologies, Lynn. I'm gonna jump around a little bit on the slides, uh, but if you could go to um slide fifty-five.
Which which slide are you looking for, Josh?
Uh, slide fifty-five. It is the um L one. It's the landscape and grading plan. That's it. Um. So John and Amy Sales uh challenges to design a layout of 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 space for their growing family. Um, where they're envisioning and spending a lot of time connecting with that family and friends uh in the near future and also for many years to come. Um, the features for the overall project include a swimming pool, spa, poolhouse, masonry terracing, retaining wall landscaping. Uh, the specific drawing also shows building setbacks um with wetland, upland review area. Um, on the, on the left-hand side of the drawing, as well as the hundred and fifty-foot front yard setback, and those are all delineated and red. Um, what we're requesting is a special permit for the proposing ground eliminated swimming pool uh to be installed next to existing dwellings, as that was mentioned. Uh, due to the pie shape of the lot, half the pool is located within the technical front yard. And the other proposed elements that that were mentioned, including the poolhouse, the stone patio, those all meet town zoning regulations. So these proposed proposed elements are not part of the special permit submission. It's understood that the remainder of the proposed pool project is be reviewed administratively by the town. Uh, twelve sixty-eight Owen Oak is a one and a half acre lot located in a four-acre residential zone with a single, single-family home constructed in two thousand and one. Uh, the property is pie-shaped uh corner lot that has two sides. Two side yards on the west and south side of the property and one frontage along Owen Oak Ridge. And Wetlands is found in the side yard on the south end, the fifty-foot upland review area encompasses the south end of that yard. Uh, the one hundred and fifty-foot accessory front setback for the Owen Oak Ridge applies almost entirely to the lot. Except for a small area on the west side of the property with a thirty-five-foot accessory structure setback encloses to create an accessory. Building space that is approximately five hundred square feet. Um, can you scroll to slide eleven, please?
What's on that slide? And so what do you want to find on slide eleven?
It is a um a panoramic shot of the uh existing conditions at the back of the house. I think that might be it. Um. Two more down.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, because of the orientation of the house and the lot, the the proposed pool is behind the home in the, in the rear of the of the property within the existing lawn. Uh, the grades of the site lends privacy to the pool space and allows it to be set well below the elevation of the road and tucked into the grades. Um, there are uh perspectives that that also show and illustrate, um, you know, the. There are perspectives that, that also show and illustrate, you know, the, the further. Demonstrating the elevation change and how the pool environment will get tucked into those existing grades. I have that labeled as slide thirty-two, Lynn. I'm not sure if that is going to match up with what you got there, but it's the, the perspective drawings that are. Because a lot is a pie-shaped corner lot and Owen Oak runs along most of it. About half of the proposed pool is within the technical front yard. Alternative locations were explored, however, due to the setbacks and the existing, the existing septic system, this only pushed the entirety of the pool into the front yard. Or considerably raised the elevation of, you know, exposing the space or put it much closer in proximity to Owen Oak Ridge. Also taken into consideration is the existing board fence and dense screening trees that are along Owen Oak Ridge that obscure the area where the pool is proposed. Within these areas, there is a small gap between the existing trees. Which we intend to fill with evergreen screening and that could be something such as an arborvitae or spruce. Or hemlock, which are all already found within that existing plant mixture. We are also proposing low voltage night lighting for the space and that's how. That's primarily illustrated with the circular highlights on the plan. That would be the, the existing, or I'm sorry, the, the original plan that we looked at, L one. The majority of the proposed low voltage lighting is path lighting pointed at the ground to illuminate the walking surfaces. We're also using utilizing down lighting on the masonry to illuminate the walls and, and safety for the walking surfaces as well. There are some uplights which are on some flowering trees along the, the top of the drawing. However, the, again, the, the majority of night lighting that's involved in this, the low voltage lighting is path lighting. Overall, we collaborated with Amy and John to ensure this is a thoughtful and carefully designed elements to preserve privacy and minimize impacts along Owen Oak Ridge. All materials for the proposed elements are in keeping with the character of the property and in some cases are already used on site. It's our understanding that the request for the special permit for the pool fits well within the guidelines for a special permit. It's in harmony with the four acre residence and promotes the welfare of the town of New Canaan. It's attractive and so, and subtle in relation to the, to the site, immediate area in the neighborhood. It does not hinder or discourage development of adjoining land or impair property values in the neighborhood. And will not have any adverse impact on the environment. Speaking of, of, of the neighborhood. Amy and John have had an open dialogue with their neighbors of fourteen twenty-eight, which is located directly west to the proposed environment and closest to the area of development. So from my understanding, they were pleased with what they have heard of development and will be looking over a full set of plans with Amy and John as, as we continue to. Look at, look at any new developments. I know that there are some additional comments that were brought up about the drainage and, and Rob Frangian will address those directly, but if you do have any questions. I'd be happy to answer those now or I can wait until after Rob speaks.
Why don't we listen to Mr. Frangian?
So I looked at Maria's memo and she basically had two things. She wanted me to pull the. Level spreader for the high overflow for the stormwater detention system a little further uphill. That's not a problem. It's more than ten feet away. From the property line now, I can slide that a little bit. And her other comment was about the infiltration rate that we used in the drainage analysis. About using a fifty percent clog factor. The number that's in the report is the fifty percent clog factor. So. You know, I'm just, I plan, I just saw that memo today. I'll email Maria and I'm sure we can clear that up.
You have no issues accommodating or requests?
No, not at all.
Right. Okay. Questions for the applicant? Okay, let's open to the public. Would anyone from the public in this room like to address this application? Lynn, can you check Zoom real quick, please?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this application, could you just raise your, your yellow icon hand, please? The chair doesn't appear. Anyone wants?
Okay, great. This, thank you. This application is closed. Item number six, three, you're welcome. Item number six, three eighty-eight Springwater Lane upon application Stephen Jones, Hadley Homes Design Authorized Agent. For curtain, Erica, this, this is a key owners for a special permit approval of section three, four, C two and six, four, G. So I think we were going to hear more on the landscaping and conversations with the neighbors. Is that correct, Mr. Rucci?
Correct, yes. David Rucci, I'm here representing Erica and Kurt Visoki. If you can put up the. The presentation that I sent you, then I'll be great. So you heard already from, we do have here this evening, by the way, Steve Jones, who's the builder. And we also have on Zoom Jim Casidus, who did all the engineering. I don't think that you're going to want to go through. The engineering again, I don't believe there was any questions about that. I think it really related to the landscape plan. So just to give you a quick update on that, the Sokies did go and talk to their neighbors. And they also redeveloped their landscape plan. It was actually already in pretty good shape, but it hadn't been presented yet to this commission. In a form that you guys had seen before. But I think the long, the long and short of it is, you can just move through the application. Just if you want to just get to, I think number seven is probably the best slide. Just working through the survey. So seven is where we're starting. This is what the property, I'm sorry, one more Lynn, my fault. So this is what the property looks like today. And it's just the front. And I think you heard last time that one of the reasons the neighbors were, were upset about this and for good reason is that. A prior owner had sort of clear cut this property, but then it decided not to develop it before the applicants came in and purchased it. So. They've been working to develop this property over the years and I think that it's important to note that this is what it looks like from the streetscape today. But you'll see, if you go to the next slide. One of the nice things that they didn't, we're just presenting this sort of as evidence, for lack of a better word, is initially they put in seventy. Four trees to sort of help out the neighborhood based on what had happened before. So they had already planted those. Ahead of time, prior to sort of developing their own plan. If you could just move next couple of pages to number ten. So here's the landscape plan and I know we've talked about this a little bit before. I'm just having a hard trouble time trying to get these plans. In a format that you guys can see through this Google Earth, but you'll see that essentially it's surrounded by. These green plantings and that's going to be on your next couple of sheets and the area up on the northeast is really just a quarter acre of woods. Which is really why that's not, you don't sort of see any sort of green plantings there. If you move on to the next page, these are the, the plants that are going to be. Put onto the property and all told. They're essentially adding sixty-seven more plants in the back of the property, the rear of the property, and they're adding another two hundred and seventy-three on the front. So I mean, that combined with the fact that they've already put in the seventy-four and they're essentially replanting this property. Of roughly two point seven seven acres with about three hundred and forty-seven more. Plantings and screening and landscaping for the property. If you go to the next page, oh yeah, sorry, that's where I wanted to be. You'll see that the plant materials that they've chosen, about ninety-five percent of them are materials native to Connecticut. They were picked for their pollination and also they're good to be holding soil and to prevent further erosion on the property. You can just sort of move through and I can move through these sort of quickly and just to be clear. So we're showing some of the. Properties of the neighbors that had been here before. And this is the Petersons, I think you remember, they're, they're sort of the closest to this. Property and this is what's existing on this property. And if you can go to the next page, there's, there's just another. Couple of pictures as to what's existing today. And then obviously that's going to be planted even more thoroughly. Than it is today. And the Petersons have seen this plan and have signed off on this plan. And there's a email in the file. To Lynn confirming, confirming as such. The arborvitae were, were, were chosen, if you go to number sixteen, please Lynn. Based just on the fact that it's a part of this neighborhood as well. You'll see that the Petersons themselves actually have the same type of green giant that were chosen. That's on page sixteen of your, of yours. And then also at the last hearing. These are sort of the properties more towards the rear. And so the way that these, this, this property is oriented is that it faces. A front spring water, but then there's two properties behind it where Adams Lane is. There's like three properties behind it was Adams Lane. And that's where you see the Pratt's and the Petersons and they were both here last time. And if you move to pages seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. You'll just see the current existing vegetation on the property. And then, you know, you'll see also on nineteen as you're moving through, you know, there, you can definitely see these properties from where they are today. But the arborvitae is as they start to grow and the green giants and the other screening are certainly going to create more screening than they had. Then they have today and it's going to be much better for the neighborhood. And then obviously, you know, they're put, the, the. We're putting in a pool and we're putting in a tennis court and like everyone else, as much as the screening is. You know, neighbors don't want to see us. We don't really want to see them either with those types of, of structures. Just moving on to pages twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-two is sort of the overview of the properties. This is not true to today because when you pull the Google map, it still shows actually the house that's there. And obviously we talked a little bit about the fact that some of these, the property was, was cut. So I just wanted to make that note, but. Roughly between these different properties, between the pool and the tennis court, you're anywhere from a hundred and sixty to two hundred and fifty feet between sixty-five. Hundred and seventy, two hundred feet between sixty-three, spring water, which is up on the, on other end is about three seventy, three eighty-two. And then the neighbor in the front twenty-five is about three hundred and seventy-five feet away. And I just provided distances for you. In the next slides, showing how we measured them on a Google, on the Google site. And then the last picture was, I don't. I'm not really sure what the lighting aspect of this application was from a special permit perspective. I know that they withdrew the lighting on the tennis court. But I'm not sure that it applied per se to the pool itself, notwithstanding that we just showed a picture of this pool. I think Mr. Turner had a question about, you know, the, the lighting in the pool, but this seems pretty standard and straightforward as far as. Modern day lighting for the pool. So I just.
Mr. Rucci, my notes had from the commissioner's input was just had to do with the tennis court.
Okay, I thought there was a question about the pool for some reason.
Was, but that was not the request.
Okay, so the tennis court has been taken out.
Right.
Okay. I don't have anything further, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, would anybody from the public in the room like to address this application? Lynn, can we check Zoom, Lynn, please?
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this application? If you do, can you just raise your yellow icon hand, please?
Super, this application is closed. Thank you, Mr. Rucci. Okay, items seven, eight, nine will be heard together. Fifty-one Main Street upon application Ryan Hoiler. Hankley Allen Authorized Agent, fifty-one Main Street LLC. Owners for zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, item number eight, fifty-one Main Street upon application Ryan. Hoiler by Hankley Allen Authorized Agent, fifty-one Main Street as owners for petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently locating to be residence zone. And item number nine upon, upon application Ryan Hoiler, Hankley Allen Authorized Agent for fifty-one Main Street LLC as owners for an eight thirty G set of sites. Site plan application for the property located at fifty-one Main Street. So as we talked about last month, the game plan for this evening is we will. Listen to the consultants' reports that the planning zoning commission is engaged. We will then open it up to the public for input from the public and. May remember this from the other eight thirty G application, but in terms of public testimony, what is most important to the commission is expert testimony. That is the most relevant thing the commission will be looking for from a public input perspective. And then at the end, we will see if attorney Hoiler or attorney Hollister have anything to add or discuss tonight. But before we get going with our consultants, is, is attorney Gelderman on the Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, attorney Gelderman, I, I think you wanted to make some comments on. On the idea of potentially taking input from the historical district commission.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. Chairman Goodwin, the, at the last meeting, attorney Hollister. Made a comment that it was not appropriate for the commission to seek comments from the historic district commission. Because there's going to be at some point in time, an application. That is filed with the historic district commission for a certificate of appropriateness. And I, my belief is that he was concerned about. The historic district commission somehow prejudging an application. For a certificate of appropriateness before it's actually filed. But. There's a, there's a problem with that scenario and that is that obviously this property is in the historic district. The historic nature of the property is relevant to this commission. And the historic commission's position is relevant to this commission, to the planning and zoning commission. Attorney Hollister indicated that he didn't want to file his application to the historic district commission. Because the planning and zoning commission might make some modification to the. To the, to the building plan and, and therefore. He might have to go back with a different plan to the historic district commission. Well, that puts the commission. The planning and zoning commission in a difficult position because. If a, if an application had been filed with the historic district commission for a certificate of, excuse me, certificate of appropriateness. Earlier, then the commission would have its input from the historic district commission, either in the form of. A, a resolution that approved or denied a certificate of appropriateness. But because the applicant has elected not to file that application. At this point in time, the, the, the only way the planning and zoning commission is going to get. Any sort of comments from the historic district commission is to seek comments from them before the public hearing is closed. Because it doesn't look like there's going to be. Any action on a certificate of appropriateness prior to the close of your public hearing. But it's important that. The historic district commission's input is in the record. You can't accept that information after. The close of the public hearing. So. You need to request comments from the, from the historic district commission. Now, that's not a, in a land use context, that's not an unusual procedure. For example. Take a subdivision application where there are wetlands on the, within the subdivision. The statute requires. The wetland agency to provide a report to the planning and zoning commission before the P and Z can render its decision. And the report is not necessarily. The issuance of a permit or an approval to conduct a regulated activity. It's simply a report. For the planning and zoning commission's benefit, which they're supposed to take into account under the statute. When they review the subdivision. So. In a case like that, an applicant would go back to the wetland commission after the subdivision is approved and. And seek approvals typically on a lot by lot basis. And it's not a problem. It's not a predetermination. It's not prejudgment by the, by the. Wetland commission in that case, nor would it be in this case if the, if the historic district commission gives its. Thoughts to the, to the planning and zoning commission. Those thoughts, those, those. That report, those comments, whatever they happen to be, are not necessarily, first of all, they're not binding on, on the. Historic district commission when the application for a certificate of appropriateness is, is ultimately filed. And in fact, they, those comments may not even be particularly relevant. To considerations that the historic district commission needs to consider when an application for. A certificate of appropriateness is filed. So. I think the commission has, by the applicant, has been put into a difficult position here of, and one hand, the applicant says, you know, you shouldn't go to the historic. District commission. I think the commission has by the applicant has been put into a difficult position here of, and one hand, the applicant says, you know, you shouldn't go to the Historic District Commission. And on the other hand, the applicant hasn't filed an application. So I don't know if that's an intentional sort of tactic or what that is, but regardless, I think it's appropriate for the Planning and Zoning Commission to seek input from the Historic District Commission as your regulations allow you to do prior to the close of the public hearing. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, well, attorney Hoiler.
Yeah. Commissioner, Chairman Goodwin.
Kindly step to the mic, please.
I believe attorney Hollister is on Zoom and would like to respond to that. If you can put him on, Lynn.
Yeah, there I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Yeah. Good evening, Commissioner. Commission members, I'm not there tonight because my party gift from the people of Canada was a positive COVID diagnosis. So I'm working from home. I I'll just say I respectfully disagree with attorney Gelderman. The H the Historic District Commission would be put in the position of prejudging. We can we would have, we would be in the position of having to make our entire application to them so they could make an intelligent referral. And then we go back and do it again when we apply for this certificate of appropriateness. So I I'm not willing to take the risk of prejudging or corrupting that that hearing process and the practical problem is that given the given the fact that the site plan, that the 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 commentary you're about to hear from your own consultants and and those hired by attorney Green all suggest changes to the to the building, which would mean the commission, the Historic District Commission would be commenting on a problem on a plan that's likely to change as a result of the zoning. So you can refer it. I have to reserve judgment as to whether we will participate. I respectfully disagree with attorney Gelderman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, attorney Hollister. Hope you feel better. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I have a question for Lynn. In the Historic District area, any other application would typically look for an HTC certificate of appropriateness appropriateness and a more letter recommendation before coming to us, correct?
Typically, yes, but there's nothing that stipulates they would have to. The last one that did would be twenty On Oak Lane, which went for a special permit and they went before the HTC before they came to this commission.
This is Commissioner Canag. I have a question. Why did the applicant choose not to seek a certificate of appropriateness at this time?
For the reasons I just stated, Commissioner, we we decided that there's enough potential in the zoning process for the nature of the building to change that it would we somebody has to go first. And whenever there are requirements required, we just thought it made more logical sense to go through the zoning process first and then through the Historic District Commission. I think it makes a lot more sense than doing it the other way around. So that there was that is not only the main reason, really the only.
A question for attorney Gelderman or clarification. If we proceeded with such a request, we would not be asking the HTC for a certificate of appropriateness. We'd be asking the HTC for comment on the application. Am I correct or not?
You are correct, and there there doesn't need to be a presentation by the applicant for the HTC to review the application that's been submitted to you. Not required. And and you know, to to say that it makes more sense to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission before the HTC just doesn't cut it. The the P and Z needs to consider in an eight thirty G application impacts of the proposal on public interest. One of those is in this case, the historic nature of the property within an historic district. So I'm not sure how the P and Z can make those can make those findings. There may be other expert testimony that gets presented to the to the commission during the course of the balance of the public hearing, but it's typically the P and Z who goes last in those in those scenarios because it's the planning and zoning regulations that require input from other agencies and departments like the engineering department, like the fire department. This is the HTC which gets involved because this particular piece of property is in an historic district. So to me, at least, it it makes no sense to not have input from the Historic District Commission prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission closing its public hearing. After the public hearings closed, it wouldn't be appropriate for the Planning and Zoning Commission to get input from the Historic District Commission. And to the extent that input is relevant, and I think it is, it needs to be obtained by the by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the close of the public hearing.
Attorney Gelderman, if we decided to do this, do we need a motion and a vote or procedurally, how do we do this?
Well, I don't think you need a vote typically. Typically referrals are made. I mean, you can have certainly have a vote to refer it to the Historic District Commission for their comments. But I think it can be referred. You can ask Lynn to to write a letter and refer the application to them for their comments. Give them your schedule. Tell them you know what the timeline is and and see if they have any comments. They may or may not. They may not have comments. I don't know what they're going to say, but but it's important, I think, for this commission to to have an idea of of the Historic District Commission's concerns. And those concerns, as I said, don't necessarily mean that they will or won't issue a certificate of appropriateness.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, what should we do?
Mr. Chairman, I think a hallmark of this commission is that we welcome public input. And the Historic District Commission is certainly part of the public in New Canaan. They have particular knowledge and expertise on the historic district which this lies in. I have no idea what they're going to say and what input. I have every confidence that their input will help inform my decision. I would hope other commissioners. And I'd welcome their input into our decision making. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay, Planner Avni, please write a letter to the HTC, please, requesting such.
This is Tim House. Can I just make a little comment very briefly?
Go ahead.
The where I disagree with attorney Gelderman is let's propose, let's assume that an applicant comes in with an application to you for site plan approval that also has wetlands on the property and needs a wetlands permit. In that situation, you would not refer the matter to the Wetlands Commissioner for advisory opinion when you knew also that they were going to going to be getting a permit application and acting on that after holding a public hearing. That's the analogy here. That's why I don't I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you, attorney Hollister.
Well, not to argue because it's kind of a waste of time.
And I I'm we're going to move on.
Okay, fair.
You guys can chat about this. Mr. Kingsbury. And Commissioners, as you know, Mr. Kingsbury will be commenting from the perspective of life safety and fire operations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Andrew Kingsbury, New Canaan's operational and fire and life safety peer reviewer. A little bit about my background. I'm the former fire chief in Westport, retired after thirty plus years of service in Westport. While I was in Westport, as I was fire chief, I was also the emergency management director there for approximately six years. Upon my retirement in two thousand seventeen, I became the chief of the Nichols Fire District. That's a fire district in the town of Trumbull. And I served in that role for approximately four years. And in two thousand nineteen, I was hired by the town of Trumbull to be their deputy emergency management director. More about my background, I am the chief's chairman of the Fairfield County Hazmat Team. I sit on the Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security Regional Emergency Planning Team. And I know that's a that's a lot to take in there. With emergency management, sitting on the planning team, my phone, my chairmanship is the what's referred to as Emergency Support Function Seven, ESF seven. And I tell you all this, and I tell you this again, because as the ESF seven chair for Emergency Management Homeland Security, my job is logistics and resource management. So with logistics, you know, part of that is where do we get stuff? How do we get it there? Along with resource management, I'm also an adjunct instructor for the Connecticut Fire Academy. Some of my specialties, what I normally teach is in the officer, the fire officer program, fire officer development program. I do some technical rescue training and one of the leads for the Connecticut Fire Academy on building construction. So that's a little bit of a about myself. As requested, I have completed an operational and fire safety peer review of the multifamily residential development that's proposed on Fifty One Main Street, right over out the window there. Here in New Canaan, I've reviewed copies of the pertinent documents to conduct by peer review. Code compliance questions, they can actually they can be answered by the New Canaan Fire Marshal's Office directly. So if there's specific code compliance questions. So project description, you know, I think we've all read about this project, been through the paperwork. So I will always summarize that it's a development that consists of twenty units in a single five story building. The lower parking level, as I'll call it, is a parking underneath the building. And then it has a fitness center, it has stairwells, it has some bathrooms in it. The upper top four levels are residential units. Building height is approximately fifty two fifty two feet. And the construction type and suppression systems are not specific in the plans. There is some detail on it, though, which I will speak about. So I'll basically go through each section of my peer review report and and speak about each section, and I could certainly take questions. Access for fire apparatus and emergency vehicles. So the project, as we all know, is located on Main Street across an intersection of Heritage Hill, Lucas Avenue. Main Street is a two way state road runs east, west in front of the project. And I'm sure the other consultants, traffic consultants will speak about Main Street, but it can experience congestions particularly during the morning and evening commutes. New Canaan Fire Department located directly across Main Street at at number sixty, approximately two hundred feet away. So obviously, they would have a very good response time, assuming they are in quarters. Additional resources for fire, for a structure fire at that location would include a response from the Norwalk and Westport Fire Apartments. Response times would vary depending on the time of day, traffic congestion, construction. But the Norfolk Station One is located approximately four mile road miles away at ninety New Canaan Avenue. And Westport Fire Headquarters is located about ten miles away at five one five Post Road East. On a second alarm box, so New Canaan has a a very spelled out system on how they get resources into town. And on a second alarm box assignment that would bring resources from Wilton, Stanford, and Avista, New York Fire Department. A third alarm box assignment would or greater would bring more apparatus from Stanford, Rothen Heights, and Darien Fire Apartments. Wilton Fire Department is about six miles road miles away. The Rothen is also about six road miles away. And Avista Fire Department is about five mile road miles away on Smith Ridge Road over in South Salem, New York. Depending on the the requested apparatus and available units, the Stanford Fire Department's response could range from just about five miles to seven and a half miles, depending on what they had available and what the equipment request was. So that's what would be available as resources into New Canaan. So access to the specifically to the proposed project. And Lynn, if you could bring up figure four, which shows the the street access and the balconies, that'd be great. Access to the proposed, the project will be along Main Street in front of the site in the single access driveway located off Main Street. And you can see that's when Lynn gets it up, that's that highlighted gray area and the driveway. So that's the access to to the site. Driveway is approximately twenty two feet wide as proposed and sixty feet long. It kind of dead ends at the trash enclosure at the end of the driveway, and that's just past the entrance on which would be on the right to under the underbuilding parking. Grade and slope, and we referred to grade and slope, that's the relates to the apparatus pulling into the driveway. So we were always worried about, are we going to bottom out? We're going to bang the bumper? Are we going to drag the tailboard getting into the the site? And that does not appear to be problematic. Truck turning figures into the access driveway, we're not provided on a site plan review set. But a site visit indicates fire apparatus, you should be able to access the proposed driveway. It's a Main Street, it's a fairly wide street. But the limiting factor there and keep in mind would would be the obstructions due to traffic. Vehicles trying to exit the complex. And the traffic stopped in front of the the building there. Bigger four shows the apparatus. So that's figure four that is up there. That's from my report. Figure four shows positioning would be limited to those driveways in the front of the building. And potentially, there could be some access aerial access from the rear of the building, and that's that roadway right out out the windows here from the driveway. But the the driveway as configured really is very limited. Fire apparatus may or may not pull into that. That would be up to the chiefs when he preplans this building, if he if he wants to utilize that driveway. But it's very close to the building. It's very limited. It would block all their access and really couldn't probably could not be used for aerial access at all. Trying to get aerial, you would have to back it into that that driveway, making sure that the outriggers could be deployed. We're very, very tough. So the applicant really I would recommend applicant widen the driveway and or provide a secondary access driveway to the complex site. Access for exterior firefighting operations and for staging. As previously mentioned, we have the driveway off of Main Street that's approximately sixty feet long. The positioning would be very tough in front of the building. There there is no parking indicated in front of the building as it is now. Obviously, the the fire apparatus would pull up in in front and and block traffic. But deploying outriggers, which New Canaan's aerial has about an eighteen foot spread on the outriggers would be very difficult on this site. And as you can see, on the west side of the building, that'd be the top in the figure there. This is indicated from the this figure comes from the zoning location survey map. Has only a setback of a at the smallest, well, you know, the shortest point of three point four feet from the side yard. So it's very tight. There are nine balconies on that west side on the top there, and you can see they're highlighted. Lynn has the cursor on them. These really create some obstructions for operations. If you're to deploy the aerial apparatus kind of down that narrow, you know, the side yard there, those balconies and you have to remember the balconies are going to have, they're going to have railings that are sticking up too. So you're not going to be able to really shoot that ladder in between those balconies. The floors are ten feet and forty two inches for the the railings plus probably another foot for structure. You're not, you're not going to get past that first set of balconies with an aerial apparatus. West side, kind of similar situation. I mean, the east side, I'm sorry, on the bottom of the picture, similar balcony, similar situation there. So really, the only aerial access would be to the very front of the building and potentially to the rear of the building. That's from the parking area in the driveway out here behind Town Hall. This configuration, you know, along with potential potential tree obstructions, if we have shrubbery. When we look at the lamp, the landscaping plan, they they show some plantings along there, some existing trees. You have trees that are going to be left, trees on the bordering properties, really makes this very tough. Building really should be reconfigured. This is a recommendation, indoor reduced in scale to uh better access both sides, the east and the west side of the building for firefighting operations. Uh, access around the perimeter of the building is narrow, three-point-four feet. Um, that one setback, the other setback where the parking is, is really four and a half feet, uh, may even be a little less. And this is shown on uh, the, the sheets, the various sheets, two-point-six, S D nine, S D eleven, and S D twelve. Um, they will interfere and the plantings will interfere with firefighting operations. You know, firefighters have to be able to uh deploy ladders, drag hose lines around these uh buildings. And uh being that tight on this uh lot would uh really be difficult. Snow, vegetation, um, would impede uh firefighting operations. Lynn, can you go pull up um the next slide? And it's figure six, and it says ladder. So this figure that you're looking at to the right side, that, that would be the um, the west side of the building. And you can see where those balconies are overhanging. Those balconies are, are coming within, as indicated on, on those plans within a half a foot of the property line. And I've put an approximate uh property line uh there where Lynn's cursor is. So you can see that if, if uh, we don't have really good access with the aerial ladders, as I described, we have the balcony sticking out. So you're not gonna be able to go up or down um to hit those, that side of the building. But now, if we go to put up ground ladders, the problem is, we can't properly deploy the ground ladders. So the way that ground ladders work is um, they are, when you set them, they are pulled out about twenty-five percent. Um, so a forty-foot, uh, easy example is a forty-foot ladder. If we would raise it, ladder up to forty feet, we'd have to pull it out from the base about ten feet. So as you can see, I uh depicted a thirty-five foot ground ladder fully extended. That's a um, fair, that's a fairly standard ladder on a aerial ladder or a ground ladder. And you could see, it goes out about eleven feet. And that goes on to the neighbor's property. So this is an issue, because when we look at the landscape plans, um, when we, we look at the uh descriptions that are, are given in the application, they talk about plantings, they talk about uh decorative fencing uh and such. And we would not be able to uh raise a ladder, because there would be uh shrubbery, trees, landscaping features um in the way. And then you could see the forty-five-foot ladder, uh, you could see how far that has to go out and where it reaches on the buildings. So um, it's just too tight on those sideline properties. If we uh go over to the east side where the, the parking lot is, now we have cars that are potentially gonna obstruct any uh ground ladders that we set up. So you can imagine those, those uh, that parking is going almost up to the property line within a couple of feet. So if there's a car parked in the spaces, and we have to assume that, you know, the parking lot's gonna be pretty full most of the time, is where do we put up ground ladders to uh, you know, to uh perform rescue and firefighting operations? As far as access around the building, uh, clear and unobstructed access rope route to all portions of the exterior of the building, um, needs to be provided, and it needs to be uh, uh acceptable and approved by the Fire Marshal. Um, the route to all portions of the exterior building should not exceed a hundred and fifty feet from the uh access road. And in this case, in the building, um, it does. Due to the height of the building, you can see that ground ladder falls a little bit short. Um, highest points approximately fifty-two s- feet. Um, exterior options will not be effective by the Fire Department immediately to those upper floors. Uh, New Canaan's largest portable ground ladders is thirty-five feet. So they would uh fall a little short. So you can see that first ladder, the thirty-five foot where it would land on that balcony up there. Um, New Canaan and Wilton Fire Apartments do have larger ladders, so New, New Canaan's mutual aid partners do have uh forty-five-foot ground ladders. But just keep in mind, it would be a, uh, delayed, um, and would be immediately available for firefighting and rescue operations. Building construction, uh, types and protection. Building construction is not uh specified, and that, that's often the case with these um earliest metal with the plans. Uh, but it would be suggested that uh the building be made of non-combustible uh construction um, or fire-resistant. That'd be equipped with standpipes, fully sprinkled, and um sprinklers to include the uh void spaces, attics, and such. Um, table, tab two of the application material states that the exterior specifications include metal clad wood win- uh wood windows, sliders, PVC interior roof trains, five-eights thick dense glass sheathing, and fire retardant wood studs in the exterior walls. Uh, further in tab fifteen of the submittals, Schedule B of the affordability plan states siding will be of a hardy fiber cement um siding. So due to the potential of um, you know, a car fire extending upward and causing what we call auto exposure, where it's burning up the siding, could potentially be uh breaking out windows and auto exposing the building. Um, it's strongly recommended that, that they use this type of uh cementatious uh materials, such as the hardy uh, hardy planks. Um, plans as submitted, they do not indicate on them the fire protection suppression systems. The fire code will uh specify the minimally required features. I um, you know, always like to remind developers that um minimally required is what's required by law. And that they uh would reach out to New Canaan Fire officials and talk to them about uh such things as locations of fire hydrants, fire department connections, standpipes, um, key boxes and such. Uh, my recommendation due to the heavy potential for uh, you know, a fire in that parking area underneath the building and the challenges that are associated with uh fighting a fire in those, in the parking uh area under the building, that it is fully equipped with a NFPA compliant Class One standpipe system in both stairwells. Okay, in both stairwells, because that'll give the uh, the Fire Department a tactical advantage if we do have a fire down uh located underneath that building, whether it be cars or in the, in the uh trash enclosure outside. There are several fire hydrants in the uh vicinity, the closest is across the street on Heritage Hill. A second and third hydrant are located east and west on Main Street. Uh, aquarium water has a uh, and provided a will serve letter, they indicate available fire flow approximately twenty-one hundred and thirty gallons. Although this, this appears to be adequate for fully uh, fully sprinkled building. It should be verified by a fire protection engineer, so I would recommend that that takes place. My next section is uh the stairwells in the interior access for firefighting. Uh, two stairwells have been proposed. And um, they are required, multiple stairwells are necessary to minimize the possibility that um both stairwells get uh compromised. So if we have a uh fire and a stairwell, we don't wanna to block a stairwell with a fire, we need two separate stairwells. Um, they're also necessary uh to allow firefighters to operate in one stairwell and uh evacuate in a separate stairwell. So you can imagine, you're trying to fight a fire and everyone's trying to evacuate the building. You're having the occupants uh coming down the stairs as the firefighter is trying to go up. So we always try to have uh at least two stairwells, one for evacuation, one for a fire attack. Uh, but the plans as submitted show, although there are two stairwells that extend from underneath the building, uh, the only, the northern stairwell, the one closest to Main Street, extends to the top floor. The stairwell at the rear of the structure on the southeast corner terminates a four below the roof deck um apartment. And there are, there are um two apartments up there, there are two uh decks, and there's also a community deck up there. So, you know, depending on what, what's going on, you could have a um, you know, holiday weekend where you could have that community deck full of folks, and then you could have two apartments with their decks uh with, with a lot of people up there. So um, recommendation is, and, and code, the code may weigh into this, is that those uh stairwells extend from the top to the bottom. The plans indicate that the stairwells discharge into the underneath parking area. Uh, this is partially enclosed. Stairwells should discharge directly to the exterior and the public way. Occupants shouldn't have to travel through that stairwell, um, or any other structure for that matter, to um reach the uh exterior public way. As, as I mentioned earlier, to uh modern vehicles produce a tremendous amount of smoke, uh toxic smoke. Yeah, occi- occupants shouldn't be exiting through that stairwell. Um, additionally, uh, that smoke, that toxic smokes, whether it's a car fire or a trash fire, um, will fill the stairwells, because if people are exiting, that's the only way they can get out to the exterior of the building. Uh, if they are exiting and the, the doors are open, um, smoke will enter that stairwell. And as people are, are coming down, they'll be exposed to that smoke. So again, to, to summarize, both stairwells should extend to all levels of the structure and exit directly to the public way. So a summary, and my recommendations are as far as access to the site and building as proposed is inadequate for fire apparatus and for rescue and fire suppression operations. The applicant needs to widen, extend, and or reconfigure the driveway and consider adding a secondary fire apparatus access road. The building should be reconfigured um and or reduced in scale to get better access to that east and west side, which I described. Uh, then that's for firefighting and rescue operations. Access driveway and sidewalks need to be designed and constructed in such a way that they can support the aerial apparatus and aerial apparatuses outriggers. Applicants should verify that landscaping, tree canopies, uh fencing, and designated parking spaces do not impede those firefighting, those exterior firefighting operations. A maintenance plan for vegetation snow removal should be submitted by the applicant. Both stairwells should extend to all levels of the structure and exit directly to the exterior public way. NFPA compliant standpipes should be provided in all stairwells, and the buildings should be fully sprinkled, um, including void spaces. On-site building generation is strongly recommended. Um, this will lessen that burden on the town should we have a storm um, or other event that causes power outages. Full generation allows residents to shelter in place, and it keeps the elevators in service. Um, it'll also helps to uh support any medically compromised residents. The team should also ensure that the elevator is uh appropriately sized to accommodate EMS stretchers, and that is in the fully reclined uh positions. So that was kind of a quick summary. I know it's been a long night, but I'm certainly uh here for as long as you need for questions.
Missioners, any questions for Mr. Kingsbury?
Yeah, um, so in, in your opinion, Mr. Kingsbury, given the current, uh, given the current site design, do you think it would result um in compromising um the public? Would it result in public harm if we kept the site design as is?
The uh, some of my most concerns, and this is typical with a lot of projects, the first thing you work at is, is look at is access. Do we have good access? My comments are no, we need to shrink the size of this building. Um, exiting and, and the stairwells is a issue that I would recommend, uh, really needs to be um, figured out. We need, the exiting has to go directly to the outdoors. Um, and that exiting pathway has to be unrestricted and clear. So exiting into that parking garage is uh really a, a problem, in my opinion.
But I think w- we have to kind of start to balance out um the need for affordable housing versus, you know, the, any potential harm will be done to public health or public safety. So just on that, on that latter part, do you feel like the current type site design, if it did not change, and you give a number of recommendations, if none of those recommendations were taken, do you think it would re- lead to um, a higher likelihood of harm?
A, a higher likelihood, it, I, I think the, I think the code's gonna dictate, there's gonna have to be changes to this. Um, but yes, I believe there, there needs to be some significant changes to this plan.
So the other part of this is that if there's potential remedial steps that the applicant can take, it's good to have some expert testimony to discuss what that could be. So just kind of going through some of the takeaways from your discussion. One of the, one of the recommendations was to either widen the driveway and or, or maybe it was and have a secondary driveway access. Um, if they did in, if they did implement a secondary driveway access, do you think that um it would also be necessary to reconfigure the building? You also mentioned some issues on both the east and west side of the property. So do you think with the, if they did have a second accessway, would that um mitigate the need for a building re- reconfiguration on the east or west side?
Well, again, and I disagree with Mr. Attorney Hollister, um, I'm telling him how to build the building. But um, i- it should be reconfigured, um, smaller in scale. How you put that driveway or that secondary access, you know, I, again, I'm not gonna tell the uh engineers and the architects how to do that. But um, as you can imagine, that short driveway, you, you, I'm sure uh, Mr. Thompson's gonna speak about this, you know, what happens with the uh FedEx delivery trucks as they pull in and, and they, they stop? What's, where's the ambulance gonna load patients? Pro- you know, it's probably gonna have to be out in the street. Um, so do we put that access driveway alongside the building? You, you know, yeah, we do, we don't wanna have to back out. We wanna be able to drive in, we wanna have access um around the building. So uh, yes, but I'm not gonna commit to telling anyone how to exactly do that on the site. I, I think it's obvious that the building has, you know, it's, it's taking a big footprint up. So um, you have to get that driveway in there somewhere and an access.
So, thank you. You ready, Mr. Rangle?
I think the last time you indicated us on how a fire moves through a large building and the structure of the building itself, and whether they lend themselves to. Uh, so, and I was surprised I didn't hear any of that. I'm studying the floor plans here, it's a long uh hallway. And you did mention the stairwells at either end and how they should extend, but you talked about, I think it was trusses in the last. You talked about a large building and how fires move through them. Um, can you comment on the construction of this building and whether it is also susceptible to that kind of fire moving through the building?
Well, if, if it's made out of um, the, I, I don't know the specifics of the building on, on the construction, and I, I don't think even a developer at this point probably has that. But the trusses, if they're open web, you know, that weeds for a uh void space where fire can travel pretty rapidly up in the um uh attic space, um, this, this having a peaked roof, so um, it could likely have a truss configuration up there. Uh, my concern is that we have a sprinkler system up there, so there are two types of, there's multiple types of sprinkler systems. But two of the basics is a full uh NFPA thirteen system. And then there's a thirteen R system, and R stands for residential, is designed for life safety. So bedrooms are sprinkled, um, means of egress, you know, hallways, bigger spaces are uh have fire sprinklers, but not necessarily um attic spaces and void spaces. So I worry about, and I, I've been to a number of fires where a fire will get into those spaces and, and run through it. So yes, that is a concern. Non-combustible, if we can make it out of um non-combustible materials, they are putting fire resistant uh retardant studs in the exterior walls. If we can build out on materials that don't burn, it, it doesn't become a structure fire, or the structure's burning. It um, should be confined to the uh area of origin, to the room of origin, or the apartment of origin. So I hope that answered your question.
And, and also, I guess, related parking cars under the building. And uh, last time we talked about um the venting of, of gases out, and there was an open, there was a, a plan for that to happen naturally without uh, you know, without fans and, and HVAC system. But um, you know, it, it occurred to me that that might also be a danger. I mean, is there a plan to get rid of the, is it an HVAC system? Um, and is there a potential for greater danger because we're parking so many cars underneath the building?
So it, it is a small, if we're, if we're referring back to the Weed Street project, it is a smaller parking area. The um, it, it is open on um, at least fully on one side. I, I do worry about, and I've been wracking my brain to um, try to think of a project that um, where, where we have parking in this exact configuration, because it's kind of odd, the park, the cars are parking kind of like three-quarters of the way out uh on that uh, you know, the lower side, the uh, the east side, the west side, they're fully underneath there. So um, you know, mechanical ventilation is always good, you know, carbon monoxide detection down there, smoke detection. It will be required by code to be sprinkled down there and have fire-resistant, um, it'll probably be concrete underneath there. Um, but I do worry about, I'm glad they're using the fiber cement uh board, like the hardy plank type siding on it to uh stop that auto exposure that burns up the building.
I have a quick follow-up to sound, given the, the issue with the ground ladders extending onto um a neighboring property, and you mentioned the issues with the aerial equipment and the balconies jutting out. And you mentioned the issues with the aerial equipment and the balconies jutting out. Uh, what would your suggestion be to, um, to remediate that? Is it something where, you know, the, the balconies have to be eliminated if we're going to deploy aerial equipment here or is there some way around that?
I think, um, well, what needs to happen is there needs to be an area to set up those ground ladders there. So if we can't get to it from an aerial ladder, we need to be able to get to it from a ground ladder to be able to set them up. With the setback being so tight, obviously we can't properly set up a, a ladder. Um, firefighters will do what they need to do if they need to go in neighbor's yard. This is a brand new building that we're building. We need to design it so that it's safe to, uh, operate for firefighters. So at least a twelve foot setback for the height of this building.
Okay.
Would be appropriate.
Going on the north side of the property?
Um, I think it's actually east and west, but that, that really close, uh, three point four foot setback.
Oh, right, okay.
Needs to be, needs to be stretched out. We got to watch what the landscaping is there. You know, um, is there going to be fencing put in there? Is an neighbor going to put in a fence? So, um, the way it's set up right now is, is we can't deploy ground ladders, uh, or we can't say a hundred percent we're going to be able to put a ground ladder up. So again, it's a brand new building. It needs to be designed so we, we can access it from ladders.
Okay, so twelve foot setback, it would be your recommendation on the east and west side, north and south, any thoughts?
The, uh, the front of it, uh, is accessible. The rear here, I don't know exactly what's happening, um, because the landscape plans really aren't that clear, to be honest with you. Whether we're going to be able to, uh, access it from the rear, whether we're going to reach it from an aerial ladder from the driveway right out here.
Okay.
But, um, and, and the parking's problematic too, because if you figure how tight our cars park together. Uh, ground ladders for fire departments are a little wider than your homeowner's ladder. So you, we're probably not going to be able to put a ladder in between cars. And as you can see, if you look at, um, some of the, the layouts, and I don't have the, the plan right in front of me. That we're not going to be able to put ladders on that side either.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Bassett? Do you have any, uh, thing to present to us this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Bassett?
I guess I have a question.
Okay, Chief Bassett, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium, please.
Um, I guess my question is, is this building compliant with the fire code? It seems like a big question. I don't know how that gets answered.
I think it's too early to answer that and, uh, Fire Marshal Paul Payne would have to, uh, look at the actual submitted plans to, uh, and finalize plans to determine that, uh, to say it's compliant with fire code. With sprinklers and, you know, and the building materials and so on. So we won't be able to do that until the entire plan set is, uh, is set in.
Okay, Lynn, is that not something we typically, don't we usually get feedback from the fire department about this or is it too, we don't, I don't know?
We do, actually, he, um, Fire Marshal, um, Paul Payne is actually on vacation this week. And he's actually looking at that, um, and that there are issues potentially, so.
But so we will get something.
You will, yes.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, okay, Mr. Thompson, traffic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of commission, public. My name is John Thompson. I'm a licensed professional engineer. And I have been retained by the town of New Canaan, done to take a peer review of the traffic study. That was prepared by Solely Engineering. Uh, just about a month ago or so, you heard a presentation from Mr. Solely about the traffic study that he conducted. Um, I, I will start off by saying that in general, the traffic study was performed in accordance with general professional standards and followed the procedures that are expected for any traffic study. There are, however, in that study, several areas that we disagree on and we have uh, general concerns that I, I think are very important to the operation and function of this proposed twenty unit residential, uh, residential complex. The first is the the way that they analyzed the, the traffic on Main Street. Um, they made a determination, which I believe is inappropriate and incorrect. That the current driveway and the future driveway did not enter into the intersection of Main Street, Heritage Hill and Locust. That changed the whole approach of their analyses. Uh, I went into a lot of detail about that in my peer review report. I think it would change the, uh, level of analyses, the resultant level of service that the intersection operates at. And I, I believe that, uh, based on my research, which was fairly extensive with uh, Connecticut Department of Transportation, uh, my professional colleagues, that the driveway falls legally within the bounds of the intersection and as such needs to be treated as a leg of that intersection. If you were to look at their traffic study, you'll see they specifically made a point of saying that the driveway was outside the bounds of the intersection and analyzed it as such. And that, that has significant bearing as we move forward with the overall understanding of how that driveway operates. Um, you, you've heard that there is a proposal to widen that driveway from its current twelve feet width to possibly twenty-two or twenty-four feet. Uh, as part of my review, because Main Street is a state highway. I also spoke to the Connecticut Department of Transportation, both the District Three Maintenance Office and also the Traffic uh, office up in, in Weathersfield. Uh, Mr. Solely indicated that he, he had also spoken to representatives. We haven't found out who those representatives are. Um, I, I have the names that I spoke to. And quite honestly, when you speak to two people in an agency as big as the Department of Transportation, it's quite likely that you're going to get two different answers. Um, much like you heard from, uh, your town attorney. Um, when is it appropriate to get an opinion from a third party to this application? I think it's appropriate to get it now. I, I did speak specifically to the department and we have some answers. Um, how do we control that driveway out onto Main Street? Well, first of all, it's a state highway and it's going to fall under their jurisdiction. They believe that it's a commercial driveway and it may need to be wider than what's even proposed. If you look at the site plan, that becomes a very problematic issue and falls in line with the, the other fire safety issues that were, were just presented by Mr. Kingsbury. Um, moving along with that driveway. Um, I, I've gone in and out of it several times and I find it very troubling. That we're going to have a driveway to a new development, housing twenty residential units. Entering a signalized intersection where the residents of this complex have absolutely no idea what is happening with respect to traffic passing by Main Street or Heritage Hill or on Locust. Uh, I, I know people can say, well, you look both directions and you proceed cautiously. I don't believe that we should leave that kind of risk to anybody in the future. We have the ability now to deal with it. And I think in terms of the general safety of not only the residents of the complex, but the residents that travel on Main Street, Heritage Hill and Locust, that we can control it. We either, uh, install a traffic control signal for that driveway, which will tell the driver exactly what's going on. Or we, we, we define where the movements can take place at that driveway. I believe based on the, the applicant's distribution of traffic, which granted is very modest, that we can do better than just restrict movements, we can control the movements and make sure that intersection operates safely. Uh, also in, in terms of that driveway, uh, because it's a driveway from a private property out onto Connecticut one twenty-four, that the jurisdiction for that driveway itself rests with that third party agency, which is the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And an application would subsequently have to be made by the applicant to them as part of the highway encroachment permit for that, that driveway. And early indications are they may want something wider than what's currently being proposed. Which gets into the, the whole issue of how this driveway functions. Now, Mr. Kingsbury alluded to it in his presentation, um, right now that driveway goes in off of Main Street into the site and then subsequently into the parking garage, basically terminating at the, the, the dumpster. And the fact is that I, I don't need to lecture your commission on how dumpster operations work. A truck drives in, it pulls up the dumpster container, lifts, uh, lifts up the container, trash goes into the truck. And then it's got to leave the site. Well, this site does not lend itself to a safe operation of that dumpster making maneuver. The driveway is too narrow to accommodate, uh, a U-turn for that truck. It require multiple Y-turns to, to get back out of that site and onto Main Street. We do not want to see a situation, nor would the state allow a situation where that dumpster, we're backing out of the driveway onto a state highway. Similarly, we have the daily Federal Express trucks, the Amazon trucks, other delivery trucks, along with the, uh, normal traffic that's going in and out of the garage from the residence. Uh, thi- this could be a very congested area. Uh, we don't have the opportunity with the current configuration to safely accommodate that traffic without some kind of congestion out on Main Street. And I believe that in fact it would create an unsafe condition and a condition that would ultimately not be approved by your commission or the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation that has jurisdiction over that, that intersection. So what I had recommended, and I have had conversations with the applicant's traffic engineer. I believe that this driveway needs to be looked at all over again. It needs to be, uh, right from scratch. They need to include the driveway volumes into the intersection. It needs to be re-analyzed. It needs to be re-analyzed, uh, considering traffic control, traffic signalization on that driveway. And there needs to be mitigation at that point in order to achieve a, a safe operation. Uh, Mr. Kingsbury spoke to the, the issue of pedestrians coming down the stairwells into the garage. If you, if you look at the site plan, there are absolutely no provisions whatsoever for pedestrian activity from the parking garage to the public sidewalk on Main Street or from the front of the historic portion of the building that's being relocated out onto Main Street. Uh, there's stairs, uh, there's no attention to ADA facilities. Uh, we have a situation that supposedly is going to encourage people walking from this new complex to the railroad station, but there's been absolutely no measures or no attention to how you get the, the residents safely from the building out onto the public sidewalk. I, I think there's opportunities, as I said, I spoke to the traffic engineer, they recognized a lot of the issues that I spoke to and are going to be reevaluating those. But at this point, given the plans that you have before you, the staff, the traffic study that I've been commissioned to review, this will not work as is being proposed. I think it's inherent that, uh, additional attention needs to be given to how this driveway will function. And how traffic will be able to get in and out of there in a safe fashion. And, and with that brief overview, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
One, I, I'm just studying the map. Um, it looks like there's two separate intersections that are about fifty feet from each other. There's two different sets of, of, of traffic lights, top of Locust Street and top of Heritage Hill. And those are already in sync with each other, right? They're already talking to each other and time.
The, the intersection, there's four appro, there's currently four approaches to the intersection, two on Main Street, Heritage Hill and Locust Avenue. That is run by one traffic controller. It's a electric mechanical device that makes the, the traffic signals go red, yellow, green or green, yellow, red, which, whichever.
It's considered one intersection, not two, not two next to each other.
Right.
You know, it's sort of spread out.
It's one intersection and that was a key element that I had to evaluate with the Department of Transportation. And my professional colleagues, what, and your own deputy police chief, what constitutes an intersection? It is one intersection and the driveway to this development currently enters the intersection and is planned to in the future.
Pretty good.
Question, um, sir, um, would it be best in your view to simply eliminate the driveway and come out the back if that's at all possible? Other to move traffic, I'm not talking about how many cars would be moving on it, but would that be, uh, alternative?
I, I, I really believe that there needs to be a different configuration for the driveway that allows direct access from the, from the building, from, from the garage to the adjacent public street. And if, if one of those options, uh, which hasn't been discussed, I, I, I believe you'd be suggesting coming out the back into the town hall driveway, because that's, that's the only other access way, um. That has not been discussed, uh, the, the way the site is currently configured with the parking garage, um. It, it's a possibility. I don't know whether that would address all of the issues with respect to uh, truck traffic, the dumpster operations, uh, daily deliveries, but it's certainly, uh, something that might have, might be explored. Uh, with the town, if that's even a viable option, uh, having traffic, additional traffic in this development go through town hall parking lot.
Alright, thank you, sir.
That's my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Thompson. You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, um, with your agreement, um, we've, um, like to engage David Parker as an advisor for historical preservation. Everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I am a practicing architect with an expertise in historic preservation. I've had my own firm for thirty-three years here in the state of Connecticut. Uh, and have led the efforts to restore and adaptively reuse, um, uh, numerous national historic landmarks and countless, uh, buildings on the National Register. The, um, I am a graduate of the University of Virginia and the Harvard Graduate School of Design. And, um, was, was made a fellow of the American Institute of Architects. Um, for specifically for my work in historic preservation. I'm also a trustee of, of the National Trust for Restored Preservation. Uh, I was vice chair, I, I'm sorry, I am vice chair of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. I served as, I served on the Fairfield Historic District Commission for seven years. Uh, and also served on that board as chairman. The, um, at, um, uh, Lynn Brooks Avni's request, I reviewed the plans, uh, for the prod, this current project. And, uh, pursuant to that request, um, uh, here, the, this property here in New Canaan relative to changes proposed to uh, the building at fifty-one Main Street, uh, which is on your screen now. Um, and also relative to the Churchill Historic District. The Churchill District was created nineteen sixty-three to protect the historic structures and environs around God's acre, the earliest and quite highly revered uh, social, religious, educational and cultural heart of the New Haven community. Uh, if you could advance a plan, uh, this is the plan of the, uh, of the historic district. Uh, he, which we are, of course, quite close to. Uh, the, this, and, uh, the steeples of churches and an academy that defined this precinct stood proudly above the steep embankment of God's. above the steep embankment of God's Acre since the early nineteenth century. The residence at fifty-one Main Street is an integral part of this larger history, having been constructed as the first rectory for Saint Mark's Episcopal, now First Congregational Church. Background and about as far as background, history and and architecture, although there there had been discussions regarding construction of a rectory for Saint Mark's as early as eighteen forty-seven, it was not until April of eighteen eighty-one that the Vestry authorized purchase of a site. The acquisition was prompted by the arrival of a new minister, the Reverend George C. Pine, who came from a parish in Bridgeport. Pine's previous tenure there likely explains the distinctive Queen Anne's style design of the rectory that Saint Mark's built, given its relationship to numerous works by the architects Palliser, Palliser and Company, who were based there. And you can see on the in the comparison of the two images. Interestingly, and and I would call your attention, the the image on the left, of course, is fifty-one Main. The image on the right is a design of a building by Palliser and Palliser. And I'll explain more about the features of that that are that are really quite distinctively distinctive. Interestingly, plans for the new rectory building were provided, and the construction of new rectory was completed in a time span of less than one year at an overall cost of three thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. The unusual Queen Anne's style of the building was announced with fanfare at the time in New Canaan's weekly newspaper, The Messenger. The rectory residence remains the only example of Queen Anne's style design in the Churchill District, and quite remarkably retains virtually all of its original exterior details. These unique characteristics include its fish scale, shingle decorated, and half-timbered clapboard siding, its multi-pane over two double-hung windows, its ornamented vergeboard gables, its bracketed porch with original fretwork railing, and its highly unusual avalanche roof that cascades from the main pit peak to the entry porch lintel. The two-story framehouse rests presently on its original brick masonry foundation and is set back from the street as was prerequisite for residences in the Queen Anne era. As far as my observations, the criteria used for evaluation of buildings in local historic districts, as well as for structures listed on the Connecticut Register of Historic Places on which the residence at fifty-one Main Street is included, are the U.S. Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation. These nationally codified guidelines consider the significance of properties relative to historic, architectural, and cultural values. Proposed alterations and additions at fifty-one Main Street violate these standards in several significant ways. The proposed work includes, A, moving the building forty-five feet forward on the property away from its original brick foundation, severely altering the integrity of the structure, its historic setting, and its relationship to the district's streetscape, where virtually all buildings are uniformly placed approximately fifty feet from the street. And Lynn, if you could advance to yeah, if you look here, the the slide before, actually, is and then advance it to, yes. Oh, the the animation's not working. Okay, well, this shows the the current building there. Yeah, it's not working. The and you can see that you can see the red line and how it projects forward of of that of that setback. The B, demolishing the original, the proposal suggests demolishing the original rear wing while biting into the back. And if you would advance to the next slide, biting into the back of the central two-story structure, destroying original fabric of the historic building, all in contradiction to the Secretary of the Interior's standards, which state, quote, "New additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property," close quote. C, the proposal suggests altering the roof and the building's massing in several significant and quite detrimental ways, including, but not limited to, eliminating its character-defining avalanche roof while disengaging its now integ integral veranda and cladding its the wooden base of the porch with stone veneer. D, the proposal suggests changing its distinctive fretwork porch railing, as you can see in the slide, while locating a seven-foot-high cube transformer immediately in front of the porch, less than five feet from the sidewalk, and replacing the home's original, and if you advance the next slide, original Queen Anne and stained Queen Anne's style and stained glass windows. And you can see, yes, that window, which is there and enlarged at the right. And if you would advance to the next slide. Yeah, this image on the left, though, the this house is amazing. It retains all of its original windows, and that's really quite remarkable. And the windows are very distinctive, as you can see, the multi-pane over two-pane configuration. The current proposal, and that's an enlargement from their draw, the applicant's drawing, proposes changing all of those original windows while adding errant other windows on the street facade. The E, the proposal most significantly proposes building a new, quote, addition with a footprint that is over seven times the size of the existing residence and an interior volume that is ten times that of the historic structure with a resulting thirty-six thousand square foot, square feet, fifty-two and a half high exterior mass that is exponentially out of scale with the remaining nineteen hundred square feet, square foot of the historic residence remain remains and totally incongruous with all structures in the New Canaan Historic District. F, finally, this proposal mimics the facade of the historic Queen Anne's style residence across the broad, flat east and west faces of the new five-story structure, as you can see on the illustration, as a wallpaper-like surface applique intended to make it harmonize with the diminutive historic house that it relocates and completely overwhelms. These are all in contradiction to the Secretary of the Interior's standards, which state that, quote, "New additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing, size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment." I would also call your attention to the the image on the screen. The the upper image is taken from the applicant's submission. And while it looks like there are through, you know, three or four separate structures there with recessed areas in between, that that is, that's all a conceit of the drawing, because the area between the white, what look like gable structures, is essentially coplanar with what is white there. So it is, it's, and there may be a difference of four inches or something, but it's all essentially one surface. So that that it's one big, it's one quite large, broad, flat wall that that goes up across that face. Furthermore, the Secretary of the Interior's standards state that, quote, "New additions and adjacent or related new construction shall be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired." Clearly, if clearly, if this historic building is relocated with the massive additions and alterations constructed as proposed, the changes to this property would forever quite severely alter the historic structure and indeed, the entire New Canaan Historic District. As far as impact on the historic district, the Queen Anne's style structure at fifty-one Main Street and the distinguished, and if you would advance the slide, Lynn, and the distinguished Greek Revival residents and the 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 transition's actually not working on this either. The opposite, the currently framed bucolic entrance to the Churchill Historic District from New Canaan's commercial downtown. If the proposed changes at fifty-one Main are permitted, this transition from the commercial downtown to the bucolic Churchill Historic District will be greatly altered with the broad eastern facade of this imposing five-story tall structure becoming the face of the district. This this becomes more apparent when considering how unlikely it is that any of the trees now extent on or immediately adjacent to the site will survive along the tight tolerance perimeter of this slightly more than one-third acre site, given the abundance of proposed impervious paving extending to virtually every property line. Located at the heart of the community, the New Haven Historic District is small by most standards, consisting of a mere twenty-one properties, containing a grand total of only twenty-five contributing historic structures. It should also be noted that if the proposed changes and alterations to fifty-one Main Street are permitted, this building would no longer be eligible for the National National Register listing, reducing the number of qualifying historic structures here to twenty-four and forever irreparably altering the historic integrity of the community's cultural core. Additionally, if approved, this massive intervention in the historic district will set a dangerous precedent as it permanently erodes the seemingly protected historic environmental and cultural resource.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Parker? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Tim Hollister.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parker, when were you retained?
I was I was approached roughly two weeks ago.
Okay, why is that? I'm seeing a side panel that says your presentation was in final draft on July twenty-sixth. Can you explain that?
I'm I'm not, I don't I don't see that. I don't know where you're referring to.
Okay, well, it was on my screen. It's now been removed, but so you you did not, you were not in position to make your presentation on July twenty-sixth?
No, I I didn't even know about this project at that time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hollister. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, let's open it up to the public. As I noted earlier, what's most important to the commission is expert input in terms of addressing the considers eight thirty G. Who would like to address the commission? Kindly step to the podium, please. You would like to address the commission?
Oh, what's that?
You'd like to address the commission?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I'm falling asleep.
I think we're all fighting it at this point.
I know, I know. I just, I mean, I waited this long, so I just want to say that I, first of all, I am Patricia. I'm Patricia Fontoxman, two seven seven, Davenport Ridge Road, living in my seventeen forty house for thirty-one years. And obviously, I care a lot about old buildings. I just want to be counted as caring tremendously about our historic district. And and you know, it, in my opinion, of course, it should have a hands-off quality to it, because otherwise, as this gentleman was just saying, everything starts to fall apart once one of the key buildings is lost, and then where do we stop? The other thing I wanted to mention was, I find it really scary, this new trend in chopping wonderful historic buildings in half and pushing them out of the way, and it seems to be pretty prevalent on Main Street, I'm afraid. And that's all I wanted to say, except I just want to put in a little side note. I have real trouble hearing you guys. Sometimes I can, sometimes I can't, sometimes I hear nothing. And it just, I don't know if you're using microphones. I see them there, but you can't hear, and I've been to a lot of meetings.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to do better. It's late. Would anyone else from the public like to address this commission?
Online, if we may.
Not yet, please. Anybody else in the room? Okay, let's open it up to Zoom, please, Lynn.
Okay, would anyone on Zoom like to speak? Just raise your hand. I think Mr. Green is there with his microphone open.
I am.
Is that Attorney Green?
It is, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport. The law office is a little gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening, representing Frederick Tufts, Julie Tufts, Sarah Smith, Candy, Greg, Michael Collins, Jennifer Collins, Joseph Riker, Susan Stout, William Randon, Pamela Randon, David Squire, Susan Squire, Bill Frank, Lauren Frank, Jackie Powell, and Jake Powell, among others. My clients include abutters to the property, others within the historic district, property owners within the historic district, and other concerned citizens of New Canaan. I first want to commend the commission for the excellent consultants that you retained, and I was really impressed by the quality of the presentations by the peer reviewers. And I I think you are to be commended, and I don't see that level of I guess, that level of equality, I'll say, in many other towns where I appear. So thank you for that. With that, we are going to sort of streamline our presentation a bit, because much of it was covered. But I just want to offer a few remarks, and then we will present expert testimony for the commission. I apologize that I'm not present with the commission this evening. However, my back decided a couple of days ago that it's tired of going to hearings. And so I'm having a little trouble getting around at the moment. But as I, as I had indicated to the commission previously with respect to another application recently, there was a judge in the Superior Court who was in the legislature at the time that eight dash thirty G was adopted. And he always reminds me that eight dash thirty G represents the unholy alliance between greed and good intentions. But having reviewed the application and the supporting documents and having heard the presentation by the applicant, its counsel, its consultants, and really in view of the commission's consultants this evening, I'm at a loss to find the good intentions with this application based on the concerns of public health and safety and impacts on historic resources. And look, I I have to say that the set-aside development is entirely inconsistent with the historic character of the neighborhood, and it presents multiple public health and safety concerns, and we will cover that. We have, I have three consultants that I will be presenting this evening. We would first like to address the historic impacts, and much will echo the presentation by Mr. Parker. Again, the property is located in the Churchill Historic District. It is one of, obviously, the oldest residential neighborhoods in New Canaan. And once again, and as you saw in the reports from our consultants, and as Mr. Parker had indicated, it is listed in the State Register of Historic Places. And it is our position that its demolition or its partial demolition and relocation on the site would constitute an unreasonable destruction of the structure and a landmark of the state. And it's significantly and a landmark of the state. And it's significantly, it's inconsistent with this town's stated objective of preserving local historic sites, buildings, and resources. I won't go into deep detail, but I I have to reference the fact that in your plan of conservation and development, and I won't read these sites as I had originally intended, but a plan theme of the plan that you adopted specifically highlights the need to preserve historic resources. On page sixteen of the plan, there is a significant amount of attention given to protecting the historic character of the town and protecting historic buildings. On page twenty-two, you, the plan speaks to the preservation of historic structures, and obviously the historic district that is the subject of this application figures prominently on the map of historic resources on page twenty-three of the plan. I would just like to, rather than going through those in detail based on the hour, I will just incorporate those portions of the plan by reference and ask that they be incorporated into the record. That would be page sixteen and pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the plan. Just briefly on the law, and as I've emphasized in the past with the commission, please seek guidance from your counsel. Counsel for the applicant, I'm sure, will provide some characterization of law on this application, and in particular, historic resources, and I will just offer a little bit. But once again, you have counsel and you have excellent counsel, and I urge you to seek seek the advice of counsel on the burden of this commission and on the impacts that we will identify this evening as you go forward. I will say, however, that the Connecticut Supreme Court has concluded that public health and safety includes the protection of the environment, which in turn does include historic preservation. There are cases such as Smith versus Zoning Board of Appeals that speak to that. And the commission's power to protect the public welfare includes the authority to consider historic factors. And obviously, this town has done that in adopting regulations, adopting your plan of conservation and development. Significantly, and just to kind of get to it, Connecticut eight dash thirty G specifically permits a zoning commission to deny an affordable housing application if the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interests in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider. There is case law. There is United Progress versus Planning and Zoning Commission. That is a Stonington matter where Judge Berger, who's handled a lot of eight dash thirty G appeals specifically found that historic considerations fall within the ambit of other matters contemplated by the statute. And several courts have similarly found that other matters include the protection of environmental resources in space and historic buildings, landmarks, and such. So you will be tasked with, among other issues, balancing whether the public interest of historic preservation outweighs the need for affordable housing in this instance, and I'm going to now introduce some consultants, but I just I'm moving, I'm trying to move along here, and I thank you for your patience. I sort of a more lengthy presentation, but I I will just say that I think it's patently obvious that six units of affordable housing that are being proposed here can easily be built in a lot of places in New Canaan. Historic structures and landmarks and historic districts cannot be simply rebuilt or recreated. So I would keep that in mind as you balance that. With that, though, I would like to introduce our first consultant. Who is Dr. Darren Raymond Locke. I have provided the commission with a letter from Dr. Locke. I've also provided the commission with her CV, so I'm going to abbreviate the presentation a bit, and with the chair's permission, I will not ask her to go through her through her education, training, and experience. It is reflected on the CV that the commission has already in its possession, so. Dr. Raymond Locke is coming to us online as well. I'd like to introduce her at this moment to review the letter report that she has submitted to the commission.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Darren Raymond Locke. I'm a principal of Sawdust and Strata. I'm sorry I cannot be with you this evening. I'm in Illinois on vacation. I was asked to review the history of fifty-one Main Street and provide a professional opinion on the proposed alterations to the building and the site. In order to accomplish this, I pulled titles and deeds, reviewed historic documents associated with St. Mark's Episcopal Church, as well as the minutes and associated materials germane to the formation of the local historic district from the nineteen sixties. The building at fifty-one Main Street was initially built as a rectory for St. Mark's Episcopal Church in eighteen eighty-one. The building served the church and its congregation until nineteen twenty, when it was sold into to private residence. It remained a private residence until nineteen fifty-seven, at which point it was converted into a headquarters for the American National Red Cross. In nineteen sixty-one, local interest in preserving the integrity, look, feel, and association of the area near and around Church Hill resulted in a committee tasked with creating a local historic district. The committee spent the next two years refining the district boundaries, ensuring the buildings included reflected the progressive development of that area from the eighteenth through the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. In nineteen sixty-three, a local historic district was created with the specific purpose of ensuring that any changes made would be improvements since, and I quote from the report, "Any one of these could be so altered or replaced that it might detract or even deface the entire district." Close quotes. The report went on to also state that the committee hoped to, quote, "Assure that any alteration or replacement would be in harmony with or conform to the characteristic of the district." Close quotes. The resulting district shows an array of architectural styles, but all of these have similar defining characteristics. Front-facing gables, prominent front porches, asymmetrically placed front entrances with somewhat elaborate entryways, and a setback of approximately fifty feet. The current application for alterations to fifty-one Main Street significantly alters the local historic district. The building at fifty-one Main Street will have much of its external historic fabric removed or changed, as David Scott Parker discussed already. And the structure would be moved from a setback of fifty-two point nine feet to five point nine feet with a rear addition that is not subservient to the historic structure, but systematically dominates it. The new addition's massing, size, and scale is completely out of proportion to not only one fifty-one Main Street, but also the historic streetscape in sum. In my professional opinion, the proposed development is in direct conflict with the original purpose of the local historic district's establishment, as quoted previously. The alteration is not in harmony with the district, nor does it conform to its character, and it detracts from the entire district as a whole.
Dr. Raven Locke, if I may, I would just want to ask you a few questions for the benefit of the commission, and the first question I want to ask is relates to specifically to the individual property fifty-one Main Street and the structure there. And can you just comment for the record on the on the probability of specific harm to the historic character of that property by virtue of the proposed development?
Oh, it would be dramatically altered. I mean, the avalanche roof would be gone. The windows, which are a main feature of that style, are gone. The porch railing would be changed completely. The foundations are going to be altered. Moving the structure systematically demolishes its ties to the landscape as it was originally intended. And just the experience of that building as it was originally intended would be altered and erased, essentially.
And that is, if you'll pardon me, so it is then, if you were to quantify that, it is a one hundred percent likelihood that there would be adverse and significant impacts to the historic character of the property and the structure.
Absolutely.
And similarly, as to the historic district in which the property is located, the Churchill Historic District, can you comment on the, first of all, the likelihood, quantify the likelihood of harm to the district and identify what the harm to the character and what the adverse impacts would be?
Well, the adverse impacts to the to the structure itself is that its integrity would essentially be gone. It would no longer really be a very good contributing structure to the rest of the district. It is completely out of proportion. Its involvement in the streetscape would be eliminated. It from one direction, moving up into the historic district, it would eclipse view of a lot of that side of the street, the left side of the street. It would just drastically alter the, you know, defining characteristics of that portion of the Church Hill Historic District, which is not a large district.
And if you were to quantify that harm, would it be one hundred percent against?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions of Dr. Raymond Locke, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if the commission has questions to pose to her.
Sure. I think we're good. Thank you, Attorney Green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce Todd Bryant of Heritage Resources, who appears before the commission live and in person this evening. Once again, we have offered a CV that has been submitted into the record. There is also a revised report that was filed with the commission this morning that is before the commission, and I would just ask Mr. Bryant to summarize his report for the commission.
Thank you, Attorney Green, and I I I kind of feel redundant at this point. Mr. Scott Parker and Dr. Raymond Locke have made, you know, extremely powerful points, and I can only really reiterate and support what they had to say because they're all totally valid. And I'm a, I have a master's master's in historic preservation. You have my CV, so there's no point in my going through that. Well, I'll be asleep. So I went through the drawings and all of this stuff, and my basic take on this is much like theirs is that the partial demolition and moving of this house is tantamount to total demolition. It is going to be reduced to something similar to a, or it would be reduced to something similar to a hood ornament on this on this oversized and totally inappropriate building. And the, I just want to take a look at this so that I can try and follow on. And so I was looking at the, there was a, there was a National Register District that was submitted in nineteen ninety. And it was not listed in the National Register. It was it was fully, it was completed, but it wasn't listed because of local property objections. However, it it came with a letter that said, let me just find it, to keep her the National Register issued a letter that said, in part, "The district has been certified by the Secretary of the Inteia for purposes of the Tax Reform Act of nineteen seventy-six as amended as meeting substantially all the requirements for listing of districts in the National Register of Historic Places." And it is, it is in the State Register of Historic Places, and it is in a local historic district. But the, for me, the whole issue is integrity. And it's integrity of the building itself, which will be lost. And as a result, it will impact the integrity of the district, and it will impact the integrity of the architectural heritage of the entire town of New Canaan. This is a prominent building. Everybody knows it. And as has been mentioned, it's stick style, which is pretty rare. And not to mention that it probably came directly out of one of the Palliser books. That it was built during the the pattern book era. There were hundreds of plans. Palliser was probably the best of the of the people publishing books of plans. So you have a real gem there. And in fact, let me just talk about what integrity is. Since the National Register, the integrity of a district as well as a property within a district is determined by evaluating it with respect to seven aspects of integrity, which include location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. Now, I've written a lot of National Register districts and individual nominations, all of which depend on being able to explain those, that level of integrity on each of those, each of those districts or buildings. So the way I see this is the demolition of a substantial portion of the house will change its design, materials, and workmanship, since so much of the original fabric fabric will be lost. Now, Mr. Scott Parker went into that in great detail, so you now know more about it than than most folks around about what would be lost to you. It's it's a work of art that would be, you know, that would be intentionally destroyed. Moving the building forward on the site and essentially making a hood ornament on a new, much larger building would change its location, setting, feeling, and association. The damage to the integrity of a single prominent building in the district would also diminish the integrity of the entire district. The proposed new construction would loom over the diminished building and negatively affect the entire area. You, if, you know, it's, it would be right there. You would, everybody coming to Town Hall would be subjected to this enormous inappropriate thing looming over this entire area. It's just not worth it. And in the project, it would, it would, it would damage, as I say, the architectural legacy of the entire town. So there's not much more I can say. The other two preservation consultants have really laid it out well, and I thank them for such a great job. So thank, are there any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. If I may.
Sure.
If I may. I'm going to be a bit redundant as well, and I just want to ask you as well. And I'm going to ask you first as to fifty-one Main Street itself, and then as to the overall historic district. Are you able to quantify the probability that the harm that you've described will occur to the structure, the historic character, and sort of the historic resource that is the property of fifty-one Main Street and the structure there? Are you able to quantify the probability of that significant and adverse harm?
Yeah, it would one hundred percent probable that its integrity would be totally destroyed.
And similarly, as to the overall historic district, can you comment on and quantify the probability of the specific harm to the historic district itself?
Well, since the district is made up of the sum of its parts, and it becomes actually more than, more than the sum of its parts, as if you start chipping away at those things, then you're opening the door to chip, even more chipping away, as has been mentioned. So the loss of a small part is really more than it sounds like because you're you're breaking up that entire streetscape. And when you break up the streetscape and you're breaking it up in a big way, it's not like you're, you know, it's not like a small change and somebody might not notice. It's a big one. So you're breaking up that streetscape. It's going to be really obvious. And, you know, it just, who knows what that opens the door to?
Fair enough. I, I don't know if the commission has any questions.
I think we're all set. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
So continuing, I would just submit that you know, you've heard from David Scott Parker, you've heard from Darren Raymond Locke, you've heard from Todd Bryant. And you've heard their opinions on the on the specific harm to the historic district and the property. I would submit to the commission that the applicant really offered little on this topic in its presentation. And frankly, didn't squarely Um, and frankly, didn't squarely respond to many of the questions that this commission posed on, on those impacts. Uh, so I, it seems to me that the balancing is not, is not difficult in that sense as the applicant really failed to meet any reasonable burden on that. Uh, and once again, multifamily housing can be developed elsewhere and is being developed elsewhere in New Canaan. But these historic structures, these historic landmarks and these historic districts, obviously merit pre-preservation and they, they just can't be recreated. They cannot be rebuilt in other areas. So uh, and once these resources, once historic resources are gone, as we all recognize, they're gone forever. So I'll just leave the commission on this topic with that. Um, now I'd like to get into the other issues of public health and safety. Uh, as you've heard many times, and once again, I urge you to speak to Attorney Gelderman on this, the law recognizes the protection of life and property uh, as a substantial public interest that, that outweighs the need for affordable housing. You've heard from Andrew Kingsbury, you've heard uh, from Mr. Thompson. Uh, and there were significant uh, issues raised. Uh, we would like to offer uh, the test, additional testimony on the traffic issues. Um, I would like at this time to call Mo- Michael Monteleone of Simco Engineering. I know he is present with you this evening. Once again, uh, Mr. Monteleone's uh, CV is uh, in the record, it was submitted along with his uh, letter report. And at this juncture, I would ask him to uh, go through his report uh, with you.
Thank you, Joel, and thanks to the commission for your patience this evening. I'm trying to keep this brief. I was asked to put together a um, a report to review the applicant's traffic report. And I submitted that um, into the record. And I just want to touch base on some highlights of the report. Um, to give you some better uh, understanding of, of what I was thinking and, and what I think some of the um, the shortfalls of the report are. Um, as Mr. Thompson talked about before, um, he and I are in pretty much agreement as to the results of the um, of the uh, report and uh, and what the deficiencies are in that report. Um, to start off with, the vehicle site access is really the linchpin of the whole, of the whole study for traffic. Um, the applicant has said that the um, the driveway is 50 feet outside of the intersection. That's really not the case. It's dead smack dab in the middle of the intersection. Um, which causes a lot of problems, which I'll get into. The Ashto Green Book states that driveways should not be located within the functional area of an intersection or in the influence area of an adjacent driveway. So obviously, the design standards say that these um, types of driveway shouldn't be in the intersection, especially that they're not controlled, makes it even more hazardous and undesirable. In terms of uh, circulation, um, the layout of the, of the site does not allow for larger vehicles to come in and out of the site easily. And um, there's no place to store them, and then they can't get out easily because they, they can't turn around, so have to back out into a state highway, which is really not desirable. Um, we also heard testimony about the emergency vehicle access. I won't get into that because it was pretty well uh, handled before. But there's issues with uh, getting close to the building and bringing in ambulances and, and fire equipment to uh, to put out a fire and to save individuals. Um, lives could be at risk, obviously, if you can't get ladders and things up to where the people are. Um, the staging of vehicles on the site um, with uh, with these uh, types of deliveries and whatnot could block the driveway so people can't get in and out of their um, their parking lots to get to work or to um, do whatever they need to do during the day. Um, the applicant had made, mentioned that some of these deliveries and garbage pickup and things could be done in the off hours, but a lot of that is really not under their control. Um, FedEx is going to come when they come. Um, contractors are going to come when they come. So you have very little control over that as to when, when people come. Um, the traffic volumes that they put together are from the IT Trip Generation Manual, which is a very good source. It's really the sort of bible of traffic engineering. But there are some limitations in how that's used. One main thing is that since the pandemic, I think a lot of you can attest to this, that the number of Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks that go to residential homes has increased astronomically. So the IT is well intentioned, but most of the data that was used came before the pandemic. So none of those new types of travel patterns are, are really in the um, in the information that they provided. So I submit that their, that their uh, numbers are, are lower than what perhaps they should be. And it really makes a big difference because if these vehicles can't physically get out of the driveway, they have to back up out into the, into the street. That's a situation you really don't want to get, get involved with. Um, one minor thing, the, the, the build year of their project in the analysis was 2022. Obviously, this would be a lot of, it would have to happen um, with this project for it to become approved. I would submit that they should use more of a 2024 type horizon year for their analysis. Um, and the traffic flow map should be updated because it shows that the driveway is physically separated from the intersection. And I think that that needs to be updated because clearly it's part of the intersection. Okay, traffic analysis results, because of the fact that he did the analysis separately, when the driveway is one separate intersection along with the um, the intersection that's in front of the property, their results do not adequately show the actual operating conditions that would be um, when the um, the implementation of the project. So, so I think there needs to be more analysis done, as Mr. Thompson says, and I agree with him. They need to um, be able to do the analysis with the driveway as part of the intersection. Whether it's signalized or some other type of term prohibitions or whatever it ends up being, they need to do that to get the full understanding of the impact on the intersection. Um, also, they, they asserted that the Connecticut DOT agreed that the intersection would not be, the, the driver would not be controlled as part of the intersection, as part of the signal. Um, we haven't seen any information that corroborates that. I'm not saying that they didn't do that, but I'd like to see um, some, some public uh, record of, of that conversation and who signed off on that and what were the conditions in which that was made, the decision was made. In terms of safety, um, the applicant did their study, safety study based on data before the pandemic, which, which makes sense. However, at the time when they did, did that data collection, the site wasn't, wasn't open. It was closed. And the only thing that was going on was that the town used the lot for overflow vehicles. So there are about 28 vehicles a day that used that lot, you know, in and out, 14 in, 14 out. Um, in the future, with the new uh, project, there's going to be about 665 weekly um, trips in and out of the, out of the site. So you're, you're, you're basically five times the amount of trips that were, were there when that safety study was done versus in the future. So that's a lot more vehicles coming in and out with a lot more conflicts between people entering and exiting the site and the um, street traffic. So this creates a very dangerous and unsafe condition. And um, you know, you have cars coming from all different angles. Um, there's never a time when somebody doesn't have the green light in that intersection. So it's always going to be cars coming from every which way. Pedestrians, I have three issues with pedestrians. One is that, as Mr. Thompson pointed out, the access and the connectivity between the building and the parking lot and the, and the street sidewalk is not really defined. That needs to be better defined. Um, vehicles exiting the driveway would need to pull up to, to be able to see cars coming. They would essentially block the sidewalk, so people can't walk past, and it might be, you know, a few minutes before they get a, a gap enough to be able to cross. So that, that, that sidewalk is effectively blocked. And the other, the other concern I have with pedestrians is that the driver would be right next to the crosswalk. The, the, the crosswalk on the, I guess it would be sort of the middle of the intersection, but it'd be on, on the, the east side. If, if somebody's in that crosswalk, they assume that they're protected because of the signal uh, timing. But because there's no control on the people coming out of the driveway, if somebody's looking left to make sure that there's no traffic coming, they start moving right and there could be a pedestrian there. So it's very hard to look left and, and see cars coming and then see pedestrians to your right. I mean, you're literally five feet away from the, from the crosswalk. So I, I would say that's a very unsafe uh, design and, and situation. In terms of parking, um, the, the applicant did not provide any kind of a parking plan whatsoever. So there's 30 spaces, but how would they be allocated? Who gets those spaces? Who comes, who goes? You, you, you have to have that worked out because it's a dead end. It's a cul-de-sac. If, if there are no spaces there, people pull in, they can't park. What if you have guests? Where do they go? Then they have to leave, somehow get around, turn around. I guess a car could conceivably make a U-turn in there and come out. So you'd have traffic coming in and out, and then where do they park? There's no on-street parking. There's municipal parking back here, a three-hour parking. But, you know, we, we don't know any, any of the, any of the details about, about parking and how it's regulated or, or if 30 spaces is really enough or not. So it's really 1.5 times the, the number of um, of units. And then lastly, um, you know, site distance, you know, they talked about site distance and, and using metrics and, and whatnot. And from a traffic engineering perspective, they use the right metrics, but the problem is, is that those are for normally a, a driveway which is mid-block, not a, not a driveway in the middle of an intersection. So you can look right and look left, and that's fine, but you have cars coming from all, as, as I mentioned, from all different angles. And it, it doesn't really apply. Site distance is really null and void because your site distance needs to be all cars moving through the intersection, not just the ones to your left and your right. Because they can come from anywhere. And as I said, there's always a green signal on one of those four legs of the intersection. So somebody's always moving. And you just got to figure out when you come out to the intersection, who, who's moving at that time. And I'd like to just sum up with a few um, recommendations. So the first is, um, contrary to the applicant's description, the proposed driveway will be located squarely within the intersection. I think we've all agreed upon that. Um, critical emergency equipment cannot directly access all areas of the proposed um, site to, to fight a fire in the building. I think the testimony um, is relevant from before about that. Um, the trip generation presented is under accounted based on the fact that I mentioned that there's a lot of these uh, delivery vehicles now coming to residential communities and, and developments. And those are not part of the IT um, data that was um, put into the report. Um, again, I mentioned is, is at this point, it's more realistic to analyze the 2024 conditions in the future, not 2022. Uh, traffic flow map needs to be updated. Uh, applicant should reanalyze the proposed driveway as part of the intersection. I think that will give it a much more realistic um, result. And, and to see if there's any um, any, any potential um, impacts to the intersection. Uh, having the, the analysis separate really doesn't, doesn't um, doesn't give you a good handle as to what the future conditions will be at the intersection. And uh, the applicant should provide some affirmation uh, from Connecticut DOT about um, how this uh, signal should be operated because it's their road. Um, so they obviously have a big say in, in what happens with that. It needs to be analyzed and, and looked at appropriately. Um, and as I mentioned, you know, there's going to be five times as much traffic going through the intersection in a week than, than is, than is currently going through there. Um, so that obviously creates a lot more conflicts um, during all times of the day. And it uh, makes um, you know, more of an unsafe condition because you just don't know where cars are coming from in that intersection because it's uncontrolled. You always have, you always have a green light and the, and the, and the um, and the driveway doesn't. Um, we also mentioned the, the parking operations plan. There needs to be some type of a layout of, of how the space is going to be allocated, who gets them and what. And then, and then lastly, to wrap it up, since the proposed site driveway is located in the middle of the intersection, um, there's continuous flow of vehicles, um, multiple approaches within the intersection. And this creates a very unsafe um, condition, which we feel is, is, has not been adequately addressed by the applicant.
So I just have a, a few brief questions for Mr. Monteleone and uh, in many um, one of the functions of this commission in many of its tasks is assuring that public health and safety is preserved. Uh, and certainly in assessing this application, we have raised issues. And your report raises issues of public health and safety, but uh, I'm going to ask you a similar question to the questions I asked of the earlier consultants. But it's a little bit different um, with respect to um, traffic uh, and the issues that you've raised. And what I'd like you to do is, can you comment and on the, on sort of the likelihood of harm or that a dangerous condition is created by virtue of this plan as it's presently configured? And sort of comment on where this falls. And on, on one hand, there's like this notion of a remote possibility. And at the other end of the spectrum, there's something likely, that will likely happen or, or more, more. Um, and can you comment based on what you've observed with this application on sort of the impact on public health and safety posed by the application in its present configuration?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that it is a safe, uh, a safe condition. I mean, like I said, you know, you have cars coming from every angle. Um, the continuous flow of traffic from all different approaches in the intersection. And uh, and the, the site driveway is uncontrolled. It's, it's a recipe for disaster. It really is, you know, it's not a question of if there's going to be crashes, it's a question of when. Um, because uh, to be honest with you, the way, the best way I could describe this is that if my mother or my wife or my kids were driving out of that site every day, I'd be very concerned.
And so it's your position then that there is a likelihood of harm and likelihood of adverse impacts on public health and safety as this is configured?
I do, I do. I think it's, 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 it's a very poorly um, designed plan. And uh, it, it lends itself to the potential for um, you know, for, for crashes at, at that location.
All right, um, I have um, if the, if the commission can enable screen sharing, I have a, just one small area of inquiry that I'd like to explore with Mr. Monteleone. Just bear with me for one moment.
You can try and share. You can try and see if your screen will share now.
Yeah, it's, it's showing that. I just have to tee up the document I, I'm looking for specifically. So I don't know if you're seeing the so I've called up the uh, sightline analysis drawing prepared by the applicant. I don't know if you all can see it.
We can.
So Miss, Mr. Monteleone, cor- correct me if I'm wrong. I have this theory on this drawing. And my first problem with this drawing, and I, I don't ever see sightline drawings composed this way, is first of all, I can't tell the distance from the traveled portion of the road or from the paved portion of the road where the sightline analysis is done, because it's not done on a scaled plan, but it's rather done sort of on a, on a overhead drawing. But this would appear to show that the site distance uh, and I'm going to say looking to the east is shown as I believe is 287 feet. And it, it suggests that that is the site distance. But it appears to me that that is not the site distance because it appears that the site distance in this particular drawing appears to traverse a neighboring property. And therefore, uh, I'm familiar with this notion of a sightline easement. Can you comment for the commission on, on this drawing and, and what I'm describing?
Yeah. So any, anytime you, um, you rely on site distance across someone else's property, you can't, you can't regulate their property to the point where they can't build a bush, put a bush in or a tree or something else in the future that's going to block the site distance. Um, so you know, for now, and under current, current conditions, it may work, but in the future it may not because of changes to that adjacent property because the, 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 the applicant has no control over the adjacent property. They can do what they want there as long as they're within the zoning regulations and, and other ordinances, um, with, with any type of structure or any type of vegetation or, or whatever that could block the site distance in the future.
So am I correct then that the sightline analysis should respect private boundary lines of private property?
It, it, it should because, uh, because I'm working on a project right now in Rockland County where the, where the, the applicant that I'm, um, um, working with had to purchase an easement on the adjacent property to maintain that the vegetation doesn't get overgrown and that, um, and that, and that, and that, that, that the, um, nothing else would be, would be built there so that it would maintain the access of the site distance out of their driveway.
And just for the commission, this is the, uh, GIS mapping, uh, map on the town website, uh, the GIS mapping. And as you can see, this property that is adjacent two fifty-one is the town, the complex that has the town hall where you're sitting right now and the other buildings. And if you compare that and the, uh, obviously the sightline drawing that's been presented, uh, the sightline crosses over the property of the town and outside of the right of way. So I would suggest and based on, uh, Mr. Monteleone's corroboration that the sightline is not properly measured. I would urge the commission to, um, go through that, um, very question with, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson and ask him that question as well. But, um, with that, I have no further questions for, um, Mr. Monteleone. I don't know if the commission has more questions.
I suspect we're fine.
Thank you, Mr. Michael.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I, I'm not sure does the, those are our consultants on this application so far. As I understand it, the commission has, uh, referred this matter to, um, HDC for a report. Uh, obviously that will become a part of the record of the application, something that the public, including my clients, may want to respond to. So am I to understand that the public hearing is to be held open?
Uh, we'll, we'll hold the public hearing open. Um, this probably concludes public testimony, but we can continue to take, um, written input.
So what I'm wondering is, will I have an opportunity to address the commission on the new materials that are going to be submitted and, uh,
Have an opportunity to write us a letter.
Okay, uh, well, I just briefly then, uh, by way of summary then, I suppose at this point and subject to whatever I may write in the future, um, I want to emphasize that my clients recognize the need, uh, for affordable housing in New Canaan. And frankly, we support and, uh, thank this commission for your efforts and for the efforts of the town in creating affordable housing. I, I understand their unique circumstances that brought us to this moment. Uh, and, but we appreciate the efforts of the town, for example, to achieve the ten percent affordable housing threshold for the moratorium. Obviously significant progress has been made, um, and I, I mean, I understand where those numbers stand, but, um, I guess the fact is significantly, once again, um, that the applicant's proposal basically to destroy the character of this structure to detract from the historic integrity of the Churchill Historic District. And really to develop this property in a manner that creates substantial public health and safety risks, which have been quantified as, um, likely, if not one hundred percent in certain instances, is just unacceptable. Um, we urge the commission to, uh, on that basis, deny the application. Uh, I share Attorney Gelderman's uh, position on the referral of this matter to the Historic District Commission. I truly don't understand the applicant's, uh, comments as to the procedure that the applicant has followed as quote making sense where I, I see it as really backwards the way this has gone. Uh, I understand it's late. I won't burden the commission, uh, with any further comments, but I would once again, in closing, urge the commission to review, um, this matter with Attorney Gelderman and the burden of this commission with respect to an eight dash thirty G application, although I recognize that this commission is, uh, this is not this commission's first rodeo on this, but um, I would like to thank the commission for your generous patience and your attention on this. Um, I'm certainly available to answer any questions. I would, uh, also urge the commission to review the sightline issue that I've raised with Mr. Thompson and, uh, and I just, thank you. Um, I would say however, that, um, there are certain, I know that there are other members of the public who do wish to speak on this application. I don't know, uh, including certain of my clients, uh, and, uh, I leave that to the commission as to how you want to handle that.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Green. Um, Lynn, do we have anybody else on Zoom, Lynn?
If there's anyone else on Zoom, would you please raise your icon hand, please? It doesn't appear on Zoom right now that there was anyone else that wants to speak.
Attorney, um, hey, um, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting late to me. Haylor, I apologize. Attorney Haylor or, um, or, or anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing tonight. Um, yeah, I believe we have said previously that we will try to get responses to the comments we've received on fifty-one Maine by September seventh. Um, of, of course, you know, based on the way things went tonight, if that has to change, we will let staff know and, and move in that course.
Perfect. Thank you. And, um, I think we, uh, would kindly request an extension on the regulation amendment, the map change and the site plan to our, uh, our September twenty-seventh.
I believe we've already granted an extension through the September twenty-seventh.
We already have that, Lynn?
Yes, you do.
And we do have it, Attorney Hollister? Okay.
And I will repeat that. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, wait a minute. And also, also we would like an extension of public comments, please.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, Michael Collins, forty-one Main Street. We would like an extension of public comments so that the people of surrounding area and also all of other parties concerned would be able to comment to the P and Z.
Well, we may consider that, but we've devoted an entire evening to public comment.
Uh, it's only half an evening, but yes, sir. I understand.
Maybe a half an evening for you. It's been a full evening for us. Thank you, sir.
I, I, I was there, sir. I understand that. Believe me, I, 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 I respect everything that you guys do and, and it's a, it's, um, definitely a, uh, I sat there and said, how do they do this? You know, it's a root canal every month. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. You take care. Okay. Thank you, sir. This, uh, this hearing is continued. Okay, commissioners, let's bring this thing home. Um, we have to make a couple of decisions. So item number five, twelve sixty-eight Owen Oak Ridge Road. Do I have a motion for approval or denial? Reasons for approval, Mr. Engel.
It is in keeping with the neighborhood or zone. It is a challenging, um, dimensions of the property in, in so far as that it's on a curb in the road and the front yard extends around to the side yard. Uh, and it is, uh, most importantly, well-screened from the neighbors and well-screened from the road and, uh, provides no adverse impact to the neighbors.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Turner, second. Do I have any further discussion of the motion?
I have one comment. Uh, Commissioner Chris, I looked at their plant schedule and it is pretty bad. It's such, everything's from Asia. And, um, it's all exotics again, and, um, I don't like it at all. And I would like to, uh, suggest that, um, the applicant have to come up with a new plant schedule with, um, a significant increase in, uh, native plants. This is essentially not that.
Mr. Engel? Would you, would, are you willing to include Mr. Chris's, uh, suggestion of a condition?
I think you were discussion whether people would, would like me to change the motion. Anybody want me to change the motion?
By the way, Mr. Bash, you know you're seated.
Yeah. I would, uh, this is Dan Radman. I would agree with Mr. Chris. I think, you know, revision to the planting schedule is, is warranted.
Okay, what we could do, Mr. Engel, is we could do the old, uh, request the applicant to come back to the planner with a more, um, native planting schedule for her approval. Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
amended to, uh, to, uh, include any, uh, planting plan acceptable to the plan.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, cool. Uh, I think Mr. Chris, well, it's Mr. Engel's motion, but I think I heard predominantly.
If it's acceptable to you in your judgment?
Local, local indigenous.
There you go. Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I'm trying to bring this home thing home. Uh, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Uh, James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, super. Um, then the other one. Yeah, I just got to find it. Yep, three eighty-eight Springwater Lane. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Is that Mr. Engel again? Okay, reason for approval, Mr. Engel?
Um, that the, uh, the, it is in keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, the screening is adequate for the neighbors. The neighbors have been consulted, which was their major objection last week, last month, that the neighbors were consulted. They, it is now on the record that they are endorsing the plan as presented. That's why I made the motion to approve.
And the, the one condition we potentially ran by them was there would not be illumination of the tennis court. Do you want to include that?
I thought that was part of there. They had already removed that and they
From the, uh, plant?
They removed that from the plant.
Okay, sounds good. Um, second?
I'll second. I'm particularly encouraged by the planting and screening plan. We're thinking very well organized and done.
Is that why you wore that shirt?
This is an original. Okay, I'm bringing this home. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, super. Um, that's everything on the public, right, guys? Uh, administrative actions or other matters may probably come before the commission. Um, Lynn, A, approval of revised calendar for commission meetings. Is that just approving the move to six o'clock?
Yeah. Calendar with a new time, so we're going to publish it on the clerk's office. So I just need you to approve that.
You need a vote?
Yeah, you can vote.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
So move, John Chris.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Turner? Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, items B and C, three sixty-five Luke's Road, Road. I am going to recuse myself because, uh, Mr. Marquados and lawyer Sutches continues to pursue a campaign of harassment, um, which, um, I just choose to recuse myself. As part of my recusal, I would, uh, before recusing myself, uh, I'll ask Ms. Nielsen to chair the meeting and I recommend you seat Mr. Connect. Okay?
Uh, Mr. Connect, you're seated for Mr. Goodwin. Is he still with us?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Um, Lynn, can you explain to us what these two items are?
Um, item B is, uh, a request from Grace Farms, um, with respect to their court schedule and who is using their, um, court for the fall season from September first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, they've submitted, um, that regularly to you for, um, administrative approval from the commission based on their existing special permits, similar to what you've guys have approved for St. Luke's School, New Caney Country Day School, um, uh, for use of their, their fields and their court schedule. And then item.
Let's just do one at a time.
Okay.
Um, and this is consistent with previous plans that we've approved, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Commissioners, any question or discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the court schedule for the fall of twenty twenty-two at, um, Grace Farms?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I will call a vote. Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Adam?
Yes.
Sis Cornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
I also vote yes. And Mr. Connect?
Yes.
Okay. That's that one. And then Lynn, can you explain the second one for me?
Sure. Um, item C is a request from Grace Farms for their annual auction. Um, the last time you've approved a request for them on their annual auction was, I believe, two thousand nineteen, pre- quote, pre-COVID, since they shut down during COVID. But the request, um, mimics the similar, similar requests they made in both two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Um, for their annual benefit auction, similar items are being, um, it, their experiences as opposed to actual, um, items that they're auctioning. Um, none of the events, none of, none of what they're, um, doing hits the, uh, you have in, um, condition number sixteen of that hundred plus condition approval, um, has spells out an activity chart and none of them um, reached the level of two hundred people for their activities.
Commissioners, any questions for the planner?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, we have a letter from, um, their attorney, um, and, um, Lynn, could you maybe highlight this and explain, uh, what's being protested and their concerns?
Um, I, I believe the letter is from Mr., from Mr. Sherwood and it's a, um, a letter in opposition from one of the neighbors. He represents one of the neighbors, uh, Mr. Kurt, Ms., Ms. Bissonette.
Okay, um, can you, uh, what, what is he protesting or concerned about?
His concerns are spelled out in that letter. Um, but he basically is, um, believes that you should not approve this annual auction, that it goes against the special permit that you've approved.
But we've, we've, we've approved it in the past.
You have.
And this is an auction to benefit Grace Farms?
Correct.
And it's run by Grace Farms?
Correct.
So Grace Farms, John Chris, is the sole beneficiary. This
So Grace Farms, as John Chris, is the sole beneficiary. This event is put on for their own benefit. Similar to, I think, let's say, the Glass House, they have an annual benefit they run every year, and it's similar to that in your view? Yes.
I'm sorry, this is, yes, this is.
It's a benefit solely run by Grace Farms solely to raise money for the charitable foundation.
That, that is what, that is what Grace Farms has represented, and they're what they're auctioning off in this auction is very similar to what they proposed before you in August of two thousand eighteen and also in July of twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do I have a motion or any other conversation we need to have?
Before, before we vote, can you just explain that? What they're auctioning off? What are they? Is it physical items, or are they? You said something about experiences?
Also.
Because I think the key word in the complaint letter from Mr. Sherwood is the fact that it's, it constitutes a rental of Grace Farms. So are they auctioning off a, you know, the ability to hold an event at Grace Farms, or whoever makes the highest bid?
So what they've proposed is is in their August twelfth email of this year, they propose a cocktail party for four, which is a private cocktail party for up to five fifty adults in their library pavilion or commons catered by Grace Farms, calling our staff or Grace Farms' preferred caterer. Any alcohol is provided by the caterer, and then they provide availability from ten AM to nine forty-five PM on Tuesday through Saturday. They propose multiple ones. They propose a similar wine tasting, a recreation at a party, and a tea tasting for ten. In two thousand eighteen, their list included much more than that. They had private dinners, they had a private movie screening, private cooking parties and dinner, kids baking, birthday parties, private cocktail parties, a March Madness final four in the court, college football party in the court, private tea tasting, guided meditation in a sanctuary, private imagination playground party, a private art studio party, a basketball birthday party in the court. And in two thousand nineteen, they proposed private, for private dinner. And and it's missing the other piece of it, and a few more other items on that list.
But it sounds like, it sounds like all of the items are small-scale experiential events hosted and managed by Grace Farms.
Correct. And over the years, they've reduced it in size from their proposal in two thousand eighteen to what they're doing now.
Thank you.
And Lynn, did we ever receive any complaints in the past about any of these events, to our knowledge?
We have not received any complaints, so.
Commissioners, once again, do we have a motion or more discussion?
Yeah.
Move approval.
We have.
There you go.
Mr. Canag just moved for approval. I'm sorry, you had a question, though, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, according to the letter from Mr. Sherwood, the condition thirty-eight and condition thirty-one and thirty-six that this event will violate those. And I just would like to get an opinion from Lynn or the rest of the commission. If anybody has any feelings about this or understanding about what why the, why it's not conforming to our conditions.
Oh, I don't have the conditions in front of me right now. I can't use them as references.
I think the intent of that condition, specifically condition thirty-eight, was, at the time, we were concerned about Grace Farms renting the facility for things like weddings, conventions, hosting large-scale events that they had no control over. They were just kind of handing the keys to the property over to a a different agency or, or operation.
They call that?
Right. These, I think what was described in this application is small-scale, like I said, experiential events that are hosted and managed by Grace Farms for the benefit of Grace Farms. Right, it's, it's for their fundraising. Well, it's not necessarily a rental.
This is John Chris. If these events, which are going to be auctioned off to raise money, were simply events to be sold and not run through a charity auction, would they then be in violation of the conditions or not?
I mean, I have to go back and double-check the condition, but you guys have approved this previously in the past. Administratively, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so I think we need to address the fact that Mr. Canag did make a motion for approval. Does anyone want to second that, or?
Second.
Okay. So we have a second, so let's take a vote and see if this passes. All right, Mr. Chris?
No.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Ms. Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? I'm sorry, Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Angle?
Yeah.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen, I vote yes, and Mr. Oh, Mr. Canag, Mr. Canag?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't claim all this. All right, and?
No.
Did that pass, Lynn?
You have a vote of six in favor and three.
Okay, so it passes. All right.
Okay, item D, ADU parking discussion. Lynn, how much, what's our timeframe by the end of the year?
We need to hold a public hearing on these and choose to opt out. So if you, if the commission desires, they can just set a public hearing. And then it ultimately needs, once you guys opt out, the town council will be the final piece that would complete the opt-out.
We have two things we can do. Look, it's eleven thirty. So we can postpone this for the next meeting to talk in more detail. The other thing we can do before taking it to a public hearing, the other thing we can do, it, what did I say?
No, I just, I said, we can opt out.
Yeah, or, or we can just say, if everybody agrees, we, if anybody feels that we should not opt out, then we should discuss it further. Otherwise, if everybody feels that we should opt out, then we can take it to a public hearing.
As a chairman, I'd rather try to get it over with now. Let's shoulder the wheel.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
So does anybody feel we should discuss not opting out?
Look, I, I would say that I think we're very close to complying, or we could comply with both of these things, but I've talked with Lynn about it quite, quite a bit, and I think there's really no harm in us opting out if we later decide to go back and do exactly what the state's telling us to do in twenty-one, twenty-nine. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that either, so I think opting out just preserves our options. And they're fine with it.
Full flexibility is John Chris, full flexibility to do what we believe is in the best interest of the town by opting out. Full flexibility is maintained.
Okay. Anybody disagree?
Do you want a motion to make it official, or?
Well, I think, do we need to take a vote to take it to a public hearing?
I would say yes, just.
Better safe than sorry, defense.
No, no.
We'd make a motion, we take it to a public hearing.
And do you want to set a public hearing for September twenty-seven? Which is our next meeting?
So, so this is Commissioner Cassavant. Could I make a motion which would incorporate that? Well, we, Mr. Angle has made a motion. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I make a motion that the town of New Canaan opt out in order to protect local control of its planning and zoning process. And that it hold a public hearing by September thirtieth in order to allow a vote to go to town council.
Mr. Cassavant, this is Commissioner Chris. This opting out would apply to both the ADU as well as parking?
I'm sorry, I was referring specifically to ADU when I made the motion. But I'm fine to include parking as well and amend the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion of the motion? I call the questions. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Angle? James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, one more. Lynn, item A seems like the same thing as item A. There's an item A, updated P and Z schedule for the balance of the year. Isn't that the same thing as item A? Okay. So forget that, then. Approval of the minutes, July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. Any changes to the minutes? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move, John Chris.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Radman, right? Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, everybody go and get some sleep. Good night, all.